Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special joint City Council Planning Commission Study Session of July 25th. No, no, July 31st, back 2023. Good to see everybody. Welcome, Planning Commissioners and Council. If you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And ready, begin. Thank you. Row call of City Council and Planning Commission, please.
Okay, and I'll start with the City Council. Councilmember Kiriyako?
Here.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Kazdin?
Here.
Mayor Protempor Richards?
Here.
And Mayor Perotti?
Here.
And moving on to the Planning Commission. First, Commissioner Miller, can you please confirm that you are participating remotely from the address listed on the agenda, that the agenda is posted at the door to the room that you are participating from? And let us know if there are any members of the public.
Yes, I am participating from the address as recited on the agenda, and I am here. And the notice is posted.
Thank you. Commissioner Fullerton?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Vice Chair Maynard?
Here.
And Chair Smith?
Here.
Okay, at this time it will be public forum. Anybody that wishes to speak to anything that's not on our agenda this evening, this is your opportunity.
I do have one speaker slip for public forum, and if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Our first speaker for public forum is Richard Foster.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Council and planning staff. As Council knows, and some of the may have in the audience may have heard, I filed a Brown Act violation complaint with the city concerning meeting notifications. Our city clerk, Elbra Lopez, quickly researched the problems and responded to the issues I raised. One was a nuanced issue regarding a required posting for a meeting depending whether it was continued or whether it was adjourned. The other problem was with the city's website where a link led to an orphan page. The listed meetings were all tagged "Agendas Not Posted," so if you went to that site, you might think there was nothing you could talk about. Ms. Lopez informed me that IT team is working to close, it was an orphan site, they're working to close that portal, and I wish to probably thank her for taking the issue seriously, responding quickly, and reporting the mitigation work that was being done to fix those problems. That said, our city still has a problem with their notification process. Councilmember Kazdin told us that the constituents of Pacific Heights were not noticed for their meetings. I know many people in Alano Heights, in this particular instance, had not received any kind of notice for the meetings, and they were unaware of recent sessions until they were informed through Nextdoor or through the Alano-Cano Alliance. Emails may reflect a meritorious attempt to spread the word about meetings of all sorts, and commissions included, but it's obviously not sufficient. A better system is needed. To their credit, the city also posts a hard copy by the front door of our City Hall. People need to know that if they want to see it, they may not have Internet access. Lastly, though mailed notifications are not required for workshops, it is my opinion, of which I have a high opinion, I'm saying, either way, my opinion that we should be mailing items when there's a major system like this rezone, or like a project that's not in the development phase, or other things that will grossly impact the community, that people in the surrounding areas need to make sure that we have some kind of written notification. It costs a little bit more, but it's done for developments later. Too often, people will show up too late to express their views on some particular issue. Late may be better than never, but knowing the issue sooner is certainly preferable. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have one hand raised on Zoom as well. Frank DiMarco, if you can please accept the prompts on your screen?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, and good evening, Mayor Perotti, City Council members and Planning Commission commissioners members. My name is Frank DiMarco, and I live in the Pacific Palms Community on Georgetown Road, a former lemon orchard, just to keep things in perspective. Tonight, I'm speaking in opposition to any further consideration of development on the acreage referred to as east of 7190 Hollister Avenue. That's at the intersection of Pacific Oaks. I have read the well-crafted letter from Attorney Derrick Weston on behalf of himself and Daniel Hockman, representatives of the property owners, calling for development of the property with possibly over 300 units. I ask both the City Council and the Planning Commission to immediately remove this property from the housing element list intended to satisfy the state mandated housing requirement of the city of Goleta. Further, I call on the City Council to work with the property owners to create a city park and creekside habitat recreational area. The potential to work with UCSB's environmental studies, pardon me, and landscape architecture departments to preserve this open space and rehabilitate the valuable creek habitat would be a last chance opportunity to save this property from development and preserve its treasure of a habitat. The city of Goleta, like many California cities, is under unheard of pressures to build much-needed, so-called affordable housing. I say "so-called" because in city after city, so-called affordable housing has become a myth. Things will not be different at this property, no matter how much developer speak verbiage bombards Goleta's planners. I urge the City Council and Planning Commission to just say no to this scenario and build a park we can be proud of for all residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do not have any more Zoom speakers. However, I did forget to announce that we do have interpretation services for this evening, so Viviana Marsano, if you'd like to share on that.
Good evening, we have interpretation into Spanish. If anybody prefers, I have headsets over here. Thank you, gracias.
Thank you.
And there are no more speakers for public forum.
Okay, so we, I've welcomed all of you, and we are going to, this study session is a continuation of July 20th and July 25th. So if you could read the item into the record, Mr. Clerk?
That is item A1, Continued Housing Element 2023 to 2031 Sites Inventory Rezoning Study Session. This item is a continuation of the joint study sessions on July 20th, 2023, and July 25th, 2023. The proposed site inventory may be discussed in segments to accommodate potential conflicts of interest under the Political Reform Act resulting from proximity to personal residences of certain officials. Staff may identify certain sites in advance of discussion during the study session in order to allow the opportunity for recusal of an official as may be necessary.
Thank you. Well, I think you said it all, so I'm going to turn this over. Well, you said, you mentioned that some of us may have to recuse ourselves, so thank you for that. And if you, Ms. Wells, would you like to start our presentation?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council and Commissioners, and welcome to this third study session on the potential site rezoning for our housing element. And thank you for hanging in there with us at this third meeting, and also to all the members of the public that are in attendance now and in the past, and also on Zoom. We really appreciate it. It's a challenge. I'm not going to go back into and do a recap on the presentation from the last two study sessions, because I think we really need to dive right into the materials so we can get your feedback, so that we can revise our housing element and resubmit it to the state so that we can meet their expectations for our lower income, in particular, sites And then maybe the only thing I'll flag is that it's not a decision tonight. You're giving us direction and feedback, and then that is what we'll use to make the revisions, and then those revisions will be posted online, and then they'll be transmitted to the state, and then we'll come back again more officially and more official announcements and more detail to follow when we have the revisions back for your consideration of public hearing. So with that, we'll just go right to the next slide. So for the agenda tonight, it'll be a little bit different than the last meeting, because we have gone through all of our sites that we presented to you, candidate, alternative sites. We're not calling them candidate or alternative sites anymore, we're just calling them sites. And so we'll go into public comment, the general public comment, not site-specific, or at least related to the sites that were the candidate or alternative sites that are in the staff report from July 20th. And that way, we can talk about matters for all the commissioners and the council members to discuss without having recusals. So that's the benefit of organizing it around these general comments first, so that's why it's so important on your speaker slips to make sure it's clear that it's general or site-specific. And then, when we're done with public comment and any kind of commission or council discussion on that general public comment, we'll go back into the sites and have one slide to share with you on, that can guide that conversation. And then we'll start with public comment. We know we have a lot of public comment, and that, Mayor, you can give us direction on how you would like those to be organized, but certainly they will be done by address. And then we're seeking your feedback and direction, if you have any, or if you want to stick with, you know, the previous direction, we can do that, too. And then we'll end with closing remarks, and if, we'll hopefully get through the evening earlier, but we'll see. So Andy, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So when we, when we take the sites that we talked about on July 20th and July 25th, and we put them all on the screen and organize by vacant or underutilized, if you recall, the vacant sites are the critical ones for the state, not that the underutilized sites aren't of value, because they are, you can see they generate, you know, important unit counts, especially in that lower income category. And I wanted to flag the Dara Road site. That one was split on the council, the vote. And so we, it was split for medium-density residential and high-density residential. We put it up on the screen as medium-density residential, and that was because it seemed like there was more support for medium-density, like a soft support. Well, these are all soft, soft feedback from you, anyway. But we could easily put high-density residential up on the screen, and we can do that. So if we, when we get there in the presentation, we can switch it up. So these aren't like any kind of final numbers, especially as it relates to Dara, but I think the important column is that lower, where it says 916 units, when you look at the very bottom under total, and that is exceeding the shortfall that we discussed in more detail in the last two study sessions. It's giving it with a little bit of a very small, but real cushion. So by taking Dara and moving it over to the medium-density, it removed the, a lot of the lower-income units out and put it into moderate. So I just wanted to flag that, and I think that's kind of it for the presentation, and I'm feeling the need to just clear up again that these unit counts aren't housing proposals, they're not projects. They are unit counts based on a methodology to calculate unit potential on a site that the state will accept. So it's not the project, it's not, you know, what we, it's not necessarily what we expect to get, but it's generally speaking, it's based on the densities that are allowed in those residential districts. It's also not reflecting what they could have now on the site, because these sites have development potential now. So we're just kind of looking at it static, like from a reporting perspective, tallying up the math. You get 916 units total if we were to do all these rezones that are listed up on the screen. And so I think, unless you have any specific questions about this, I will turn it back to the mayor, and then we can start with the public comment at the order that you choose.
So the public comment would be on not a particular, a site that may not have been, they could speak about a site that may not have made the list or be on the list, or a site that somebody has to recommend, correct?
Oh, thank you. Andy, will you go back to the agenda, and that way we can not be distracted by that? Yes, but we're still at the public comment, not about specific sites. Thank you. You're on top of it.
So we'll go there first.
Okay.
Excuse me? Oh, Stuart, Councilmember Kazdin, way over there. Do you have a question?
Not a question, I have a comment.
Okay.
And so just in general, so last time, when we started, Mayor Protemp Richards laid out his rationale for why he was pursuing the way that he was, and I want to, I have a different story. And in my case, first of all, I started out with what the county did, when the county submitted their proposal, and we had a critique of the county's proposal. Our response emphasized about four things. First of all, we argued both in op-eds and in formal letters that it was unfair because it was overemphasizing the land that was near Goleta, that the overwhelming proportion of the sites were adjacent to the city, and that there wasn't some sort of geographic balance of some kind or another. Second, and this is the equity one, since that there was a deliberate, or it seemed that Montecito, Hope Ranch were being excluded, and we found that to be inappropriate and a failure of environmental justice. Third, there was a poor effort by the county, it seemed, to really evaluate and understand the impacts on the surrounding area. The Glen Annie Golf Course one was an obvious one. It would have added an extra lane or more to Cathedral Oaks, which was unprepared for. It would have impacted the 101, or the 101 off-ramp, which is already incredibly dangerous. It seemed to be thought, not really thought out, as far as how it would impact the surrounding area and the safety of the residents. And finally, we also commented on the, that it was rezoning ag sites and open space without assessing really environmental impacts and things like that. So what did we do with our proposal? We seem to have followed the same path. We overemphasized one portion of the city, that is Western Goleta, and that is right now in the area District Four around Hollister. There's a significant overemphasis there, and there's no ethos or effort at some sort of sense of shared sacrifice. There's an interest in imposing much of it in one area. Might I add, also the same area that's gotten the bulk of the development in the past cycle. Second, an area, and this goes to the equity question, one area that was essentially excluded from the burden of development, it was District One, the Dara Road site, which we've heard a ton about, is right now, the landowner has, we initiated a general plan amendment which would add the medium-density housing. So the effect of what we were proposing would have been 43 houses, 43 units, and that wasn't enough.
Councilmember Kazdin, could we narrow our comments to not specific sites because of recusal issues? Thank you.
I'll try and do that. But District One is decidedly, compared to District Four, it is decidedly wealthier and wider than in District, the area where hypothetically one potential project might be. And last, as far as the impacts, as far as traffic go, we have clear, you know, where there's going to be an additional lane added, and we know that ahead of time, such as in 7190, that we need to recognize those impacts. So, so that, so first, so in other words, to start with first, that using the rubric, the using the standards that we had before with respect to how we responded to the county, this does not comport. The same criticisms that we levied against the county, we could levy against the proposals that are here. How about the standards that were proposed in the last meeting? Like, for instance, is it close to shopping? Well, I would note that the idea of, is it close to shopping? Can we walk to shopping centers? We did not respond to the county's proposal when they said develop the South Patterson Ag Block, and we didn't say, oh, that's a great idea. There's shopping right nearby, you can walk to the shopping, you can go, there's buses over there. We did not support that at the time, and so it isn't appropriate to be using a different standard for different situations when they're both related, and it looks like it smacks of that one is more convenient than the other. As far as, you know, another criteria that was held up and emphasized for its importance was proximity or the availability of bus routes. And that hypothetically, I guess, the idea was we don't have to worry about traffic because people will take buses, or something like that. And it is, just as a general principle, it's inappropriate to assume that the new residents will be responding differently than current residents. The way current residents respond is the way we have to, to the use and the availability of buses, is the way that we have to respond or anticipate new residents will behave. And the fact is, is that if you go to Hollister Village, for instance, or you go around there, the buses are not being heavily used that way. Bus traffic has actually decreased in the past several years. And so it's fine for us to be supportive of buses, but it's not okay for us to anticipate that that's going to be the salvation for the traffic problems in certain areas. And, you know, I would just observe that with respect to the proximity to schools, for instance, you know, some locations that shall not be named hypothetically, or not hypothetically, are close to public schools and are being critiqued as not appropriate. Other ones which are far from schools are somehow viewed differently. So just one last or so point, and that is as far as with the planning process, that we object to when Sacramento imposes requirements on us and says that certain kinds of projects are going to be fast-tracked, certain kinds of projects are going to get some sort of shortcut, and they won't have to go through a develop, a review process in the same way, because they're unfamiliar with the site-specific context. They don't know what's actually specifically going on. So using some sort of objective yardstick without using our local knowledge, the local context, makes us no better than the state. It's essential that we have to understand and interpret each of the sites and the specific impacts, not simply is it an arterial road or something like that, but what is the actual consequence in that area from the proposal? And I guess I'd just say that some of the votes, for instance, that I took early were with the expectation or the appreciation that we were sharing in the burden, that it wasn't that we were singling out one area or another, but that there was a sense of that each area is going to have to bear some of the burden. And if we're wiping that out, and there's no essential kind of, that it's just a list, and of where are their opportunities? It's the same problem that we identified for the county, and it leads us down the same paths. And I guess I'll be more specific when we come to other things, but I guess I'd say, number one, I'm disappointed, as I've probably implied before so subtly, and, well, anyway, that's it.
Yes. Okay, please, go ahead. No, you know, excuse me, excuse me, everyone. No clapping, no booing, that just doesn't work here. But, you know, I'm going to just jump in, because I realize that Councilmember Kiriyako wanted to speak, and you want to speak, but I'm going to jump in, because it's something that I had asked for, and I realized I'd asked for it late. And staff is extremely busy, and they're doing such a great job of helping us work through all these numbers and addressing everything. And the one thing that I had asked for is if, when we are discussing tonight, and I'm not talking about any particular site, but I wanted us to be able to show the numbers. What are the numbers on the western end, the northwest and the southwest? And to have a map that shows what we're looking at. And if my numbers are correct, on the map, you can pull up the map, but if my numbers are correct, the western end combined, northwest and southwest, so it would be 789 units on the western end. On the north end, northeast and southeast, we're looking at, the numbers could change, but it's either 415 or 372. So I guess my questions to staff is more about looking forward on that intersection, that's already a D. How do we propose, and maybe this is appropriate time to ask somebody that could speak to, how do we mitigate that level D service with the added impact to the growth? I personally am not an engineer, but I can't see how you can widen that street. How do you do that? There's no room to widen Hollister. So my question is if there's someone from, that can speak from Public Works, or that has some knowledge of what are the prospects? What are we going to do with that many housing coming to one side? And is that really, I guess my question to my colleagues, is that really how we want Goleta to look? That all the affordables are on one end, and all the single-family are on, in the northern end? So that's just my, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to ask the question about the traffic and what prospects they have? Are we looking at an overpass? What are we going to do?
Mayor, Councilmember Kazdin, we can take this in any order that you would like. I think it's, we should answer this question, and we also have representative from Public Works here who can go up to the podium and talk about traffic. So if that's your wish, it's not a problem to take this as a study session. We can take this in any order that you would like. As far as the, the traffic goes while we're getting the Public Works representative to the podium, we do have in the, and the general plan identifies Stork and Hollister, as you know, as, like, an impacted intersection. So it's the one intersection in the city that's allowed to drop to a different level of service because of that. And then the general plan has, you know, fixes, but not at the same fixed level as other intersections, because it's already a challenged intersection. So we, and that's based on the full build-out capacity of the city, and that is maybe answering your, or you're starting an answer from a, from a technical, general plan, build-out, capacity perspective, but not from a on-the-ground reality perspective, and I think, oh.
I see our city manager up there.
When you're finished.
Mr. Nisbet?
And since I don't have a name tag, Robert Nisbet, city manager, and I guess there was an extra seat, so I could have set up there, but that's okay. To both your questions, first about the map, we do have a map, and Ms. Wells can share that at any time. You do have the table that you just saw, so it is a matter of looking at the map spatially, looking at the table, kind of tallying up the numbers however you want. You can do it geographically, you can do it north-south, you can do it east-west. Those resources are available, so we can always oscillate back and forth between the table and the map, that resource is available to you. And then on the questions about traffic, we do have our traffic engineer, not here live, but he is on Zoom, Mr. Derek Rapp, and he is available to answer questions on traffic generally. I'll just remind the council, for now, any question should be kind of general, and then if we get to certain sites, and there's a question about a certain site, about how that site might impact traffic, we can certainly call Mr. Rapp up when we get to that point for the recusal process. So he's here now, I see him queued up in case there's any questions.
And let me be clear that the reason I'm bringing this up now is because I'm a visual person, so, I mean, a map would have helped me, and I realize it's not staff's fault that I didn't ask for it soon enough. They have the map, but they didn't have the breakdown of the numbers in each area. So, I mean, that we, the public, can look at, because I think it's important for all of the public to see what we're up against because of the state. This isn't something, you know, this is what we're being mandated to do. This isn't something, you know, this is what we're being mandated to do. And it's, as you can see, we take it very seriously. We've been working on this for, I don't know how many hours we put into this, so we care. We want to get it right. But I just want to make sure that we're all going into this with our eyes wide open. Okay. So, Mr. Rapp, do you want to answer my question now? Or should we take more questions? I see you on Zoom.
Madam Mayor, I'm just wondering, just as a point of order, if we're going to go into a Q and A with staff, and prior to that, we had a general comment from members of council, I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to let remaining members of council that want to make a general comment go ahead and make the comment, and then we can go into Q and A?
That's fine with me. That's fine.
Do you mind if I go?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just, sometimes you want to take the bait. Sometimes you don't want to take the bait. I'm going to take the bait. So what's the expression? There's lies, damned lies, and statistics. And, but before I go into numbers, general principles. There's times when we're four districts, and there's times when we're one city with one future. And so I'm a little distressed that we, because of the pressures, because of our sense of it's unfair, et cetera, et cetera, we're pitting neighborhood against neighborhood, district against district, community against community. We're all one community at the end of the day. And the purpose of this exercise is to provide housing for our community. But if we're going to get into the whole thing about, oh, my district has only so much, but other district has so much, let's all start from the same set of facts. There's over 400 units that we're not talking about rezoning because we rezoned them already. Guess where they are? I'll give you a hint, it's not Western Galita. Let's start with Heritage Ridge. 332 units. It was, and it was a site that we talked about for years. We planned for it for years. And now we're not only rezoning it, but we're actually, we actually have a project. And it has 102 units for low and very low-income folks, seniors, veterans, people who have previously experienced homelessness, et cetera. It's going to make getting to our numbers a lot easier. And I didn't object once that it was going to cause a whole bunch of traffic at Hollister and Los Carneros, or that it was going to create a lot of traffic for the people that were trying to get on the 101. I just said, you know, we need housing. It seems like a place that makes sense for housing. Let's do some housing. So that's 332 units that are not in Western Galita, but we're not talking about them because we already did it. The next one I want to talk about is Buena Tierra, the former Super 8 motel, which is now not going to be a motel anymore. As of October, it's going to be permanent supportive housing for people who have experienced homelessness, transitional age youth who are trying to improve their lives. That's 59 low-income units, very, excuse me, very low-income units, and one above-moderate unit for the person who's going to live on-site and be the on-site manager. So 332 plus 70, someone do the math for me. I'm not a math major. I think that's over 400, though. So already, just before we even began this exercise, if we're going to kind of slice and dice ourselves into districts and pit each other against, ourselves against each other, my district, my constituents have already put in more units than are proposed in, I think, two of the districts. So I guess the question I'll ask rhetorically is, do we really want to go down that road? Do we really want to start pointing fingers at each other and saying, you're dumping housing in my neighborhood, and you're not dumping housing in another person's neighborhood? It's not about dumping. It's about people, and people need housing. And it's, and what this exercise is about is putting the right things in the right places, the right amount of housing in the right places. And I haven't always wanted to go high-density in every place, but I've wanted to go high-density in quite a few places. I haven't been the person saying, heck, no, in this neighborhood. Please don't put that in Eastern Galita. It's not fair. The Yardi Project. The Yardi Project is basically across the street from Buena Tierra. You think Hollister and Fairview isn't going to have traffic? And we're counting, and since we're kind of talking about this from the standpoint of an exercise, we're only counting 198 units for Yardi. I read in the newspaper they're proposing almost 400. We're not counting them because it's state bonus density and because we're doing an affordable housing overlay that underlying zoning isn't changing. If you want to actually start adding up what's really coming just to my district in Eastern Galita, I'm almost at 900 units. So can we please, pretty please, with sugar on top, stop pitting ourselves against each other and start doing what's right for our community?
No clapping, please. I'm just going to say I'm sorry that you've taken it as if we're pitting each other against each area. I don't see it that way. I see it as us going into this with our eyes wide open.
I was actually responding to another commenter on that. Who actually specifically pointed out a specific district.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by saying I don't believe in using race to disparage any part of our community. And I want to thank District One for electing the first Latina to this council. This is the first year that we are operating under council districts. As Councilmember Kiriakko said, there are times when we will each be called on to voice an opinion or make a decision on behalf of our district. But this discussion and these decisions call on us to represent all of Galita. No matter what part of Galita we live in, we shop, recreate, work, and enjoy life all throughout the city. The decisions we make will have impacts beyond their immediate areas. I've been disheartened by comments that pit one neighborhood against another. That's not Galita. That's not the good land values that I know. I would urge us to talk this through collegially. We will ultimately make our own individual decisions, but at the end of the day, we're still colleagues and neighbors. We model the behavior and civility that we want to see in our communities. And I wanted to share one more factor before we get started or go to questions for staff that hasn't been shared, and that is informed by my eight years of prior experience as a Galita Union School District Board Member. When I look specifically at the elementary schools within the city of Galita boundaries, Elwood, Brandon, La Patara, and Kellogg, that is where I most see what is wonderful about Galita. Because each of those schools represents the diversity of our community. Despite what some may assume, each of those schools welcome kids and families across incomes, across racial and ethnic backgrounds, and housing type, single-family, multifamily, and affordable. Elwood and Brandon draw from diverse communities with diverse housing stock, and the vast majority of the children from Old Town are integral to the fabric of the La Patara and Kellogg student body. I don't believe that we have siloed neighborhoods in Galita. My experience as a parent and as a school board member has shown me the opposite. Infrastructure is a very real issue. I have a background in land use planning. I completely understand that. Those are valid questions that, as a council, we should absolutely take into consideration and ask questions of staff before we make decisions. I've appreciated this process because we have gone through each site, and I have said from the beginning, from the first of these meetings, that then we need to take a step back. I have an open mind. I appreciate all of the public comment that we've received, and I want to go take a look at some of these sites that have generated a lot of public comment. So I just really urge us, my colleagues and our public commenters, we're one community. This is not easy. We're doing this because we have to. Let's try to make the best decisions we can, and remember that we're not individual parts of this community. We all care about all of Galita. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kasdan.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that intro of lies, damn lies, and what that was supposed to be implying, if you were calling me a liar or not. But we'll let that go. So a couple of things. First, the Heritage Ridge, for example, was zoned residential. Not only that, it was part of an affordable housing overlay in the previous, in the previous cycle. It's, if you want to look where previous housing has occurred, whether it's the hideaway Hollister Village, you can look at the Hollister, the corridor there. Second, the demographics are not something I'm making up. We went through, when we did the district, the district mapping, we looked at the demographics for the city. So it's not just a figment of my imagination or anything like that, and I'm not trying to be divisive. It's simply a reflection of something that is a fact. The last thing, and I think it's something that Councilmember Kiriakko brought up, is the Buena Tierra and the Yardi Projects. And the point about that is that that's a perfect example where site-specific knowledge, where they're fit into that little area really well. We didn't get a lot of blowback. We didn't get a lot of opposition because they were good projects for the location. And so what's important is for us to use our local knowledge about the specific sites, to look at the impacts on those particular locations and make sure that those impacts are going to be appropriate. So those are my last comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from our colleagues? Planning Commissioners? Okay. Should we go to the map and maybe look at numbers and ask Mr. Rapp to come back and answer my question about what we're proposing? Maybe he can enlighten me on what we are, we're needing to do on the western end to accommodate the added traffic.
Yes, Mayor, and Council and Commissioners, we're lighting up the map now, and then Mr. Rapp can speak to and hopefully respond to your question.
Mr. Rapp, I see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. So the question about, you know, direct impacts to infrastructure, you know, we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit on all of this because, again, this is more of a programmatic level and not so much an impact-level discussion. Each one of these sites, if they are ever proposed for development, would go, would undergo a rigorous environmental review process, and that level of analysis would be done on each and every project. Now, that being said, so from a specificity standpoint, I'm not going to be able to tell you where the impacts are going to be and what improvements will need to be made as a result of any, any one or the cumulative level of all of these projects. But stepping back for a moment and just talking broadly, one thing that could be, should be kept in mind is that the general plan considers what is called build-out, at least what was considered build-out at the time, which is for the zoning that was designated at the time, that 100% of those parcels get built out to that potential. That in and of itself is already a fairly conservative estimate of impacts to public infrastructure because in the 25-plus years of work that I've done in transportation planning, that never happens. You know, cities don't get built out to their 100% potential. So there's already a buffer sort of built in to the analysis of the general plan and the impacts to the surrounding infrastructure. That's one. Two, just generally and broadly, about the selection of sites being along major corridors. And there was a comment earlier by one of the council members about expecting transit ridership to be the same as it has historically been. That is certainly, in the short term, I think that is a realistic expectation. But in the long term, and the goal of developing along major corridors and improving density along major corridors is not only making it more attractive for transit, but also in turn making transit more efficient, shorter headways and the rest, so that transit is more of a viable option, not just for those on the, you know, the ends of the economic spectrum, but for everyone. So that ridership does increase on a percentage basis over a longer period of time. And that is the planning philosophy that, that's the, you know, state of the industry for transportation planning, is to do that level of planning along major corridors and encouraging areas where transit is underutilized to be more heavily utilized and then in turn being able to be improved upon and be more effective. So that, again, and then the last thing I'll say is that a lot of these sites, again, are the, are, while they may have increased trip numbers, they are in positions where they'll have the highest probability of having the least impact to public, public infrastructure, generally speaking. And that's a broad statement. There are obviously outlier sites here that are not on major corridors, and those, again, will need to be dealt with on an individual basis. So I apologize that I can't answer your question, any specificity, but I did want to bring up those points as a, you know, broad, general transportation planning bent.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. I only brought it up because I think at one of our meetings, there was a mention of the Hollister Corridor and mitigation needed. And I was curious to, if we had any, anything in our pocket that we're looking at, I know that there, and I'm not going to go into the whole topic of it, but I know there had been mention of an overpass, but there's really no funding for that. So that's why I asked that question.
And Madam Mayor, I can, I can respond to that. I mean, I know that there are, there have been concepts developed, both for overpasses that do not connect to the freeway, but more as connections for local travel. Those are very expensive undertakings with a lot of, lot of their own impacts in and of themselves on surrounding neighborhoods. And there's also been concepts of roundabouts, for example, example at Stork and Hollister. But all of those are in the concept level, and none of them have gotten to the, risen to the level of being funded at this, at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Commissioner Chapman?
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Rapp. So when it comes to traffic and traffic impacts, a lot of my colleagues have mentioned road widens as sort of a fix to that. And I have to admit, looking at the, something like the 405 in LA, it seems like adding lanes seems to not really bring the bang for your buck. Do you have any comment on the prospect of road widens and sort of where the state-of-the-art is when it comes to things like induced demand and other modes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers and planning commissioners. This is, again, you know, something that's more of a broad, broad question and addressed in sort of transportation planning best practices, if you will. There are, you know, obvious, LA is an example of, of, historically, where they had, they had land, they had space, and they continued to add lanes and add lanes and add lanes to a point where you build to a point where you run out of space, and then you still don't have enough room. So whereas, say, on the other end of the spectrum, say, a community, you know, a charter city like Santa Barbara, very constrained right-of-ways, not a whole lot of, you know, there's already a lot of dense build-out in the downtown grid, not a whole lot of right-of-way. So they're, you know, they have to look at other land use. So they're, you know, they have to look at other land-use solutions rather than purely infrastructure. In Galleta's case, obviously, there's a little, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. But I would dare say, for the majority of our corridors, we've done the building that we feasibly can do within, with a few exceptions. We've done the building that we can do of widening our roads. And there's also a bit of a, a bit of a conundrum with widening, widening roads as being effective at moving traffic because the wider, the wider you make roads, the longer time you have to dedicate for pedestrians to cross, for example, and bikes to cross, et cetera. So there's more and more inefficiencies in your traffic system that occur with wider roads. And you also change the nature of your community. You know, widening a road to a six-lane highway creates a real barrier to, to folks who are walking and riding their bikes, et cetera. So it's a real mixed bag. I would say that the approach that the city has taken is, one, a combined approach of both infrastructure improvements as well as land-use planning and trying to make those go hand-in-hand with the right-of-way that we have available.
Thank you.
Mayor Pertham Richards?
Thank you. I have a question for staff. We received several comments from the public regarding the potential impacts or how any potential development would affect schools and elementary schools, I think, in particular, were referenced, as well as water and sewer infrastructure. And I guess my question is, to what degree, you know, should we include this as part of our discussion, as part of our analysis? I don't recall us talking about schools in the past, and I'm not sure that we have data about that, about what schools are more impacted than others and what, even what school districts any of the potential properties would be in. So is that something that we should consider? Or if not, do we have information about that so that we can apply it to all? Because I wouldn't want to just get information on one property or a couple without looking at all of that. And then, and then also with the water and sewer, if we have information about that as well.
So on the Housing Element webpage, under the city's webpage, you can see the adopted housing element. And in the technical appendix, there's an analysis about infrastructure demands, and that's a requirement from the state that we include that analysis, that there's infrastructure to serve the needs. And if there isn't, we have to, we don't get a not-plan for housing. We definitely don't get to do that. But we have to write programs that will put us in a better position to make sure that those needs are met. And we're also updating, you know, as we do this revision, we're updating that section for the, for the rezoning. So in the, like, water, for example, we have specific programs that were added to our housing element to address water, because water is one of the, probably the biggest hurdle, it has been one of the biggest hurdles for us. So we have to be more proactive at working with the water district to find new water sources and conserve water, all those things. So you can see the analysis, all of the schools and sewer and all of those things at that state-required level. And then project-specific will do the same. They will have to, when projects come in, we'll have to look at the needs for each development and how the services are available or not to meet those needs. So there's a lot of steps along the way to analyze services that are needed for rezoning and then also specific projects. And you can see some of that on our webpage now.
Okay. And with regard to water, I think one of the letters had brought up that they thought that there was a property that did not have a can and will, will-serv letter from the water district. Do you, is that needed? Or, and do you know, can you verify that? Or can you give us any information about what we are requiring from potential develop, these properties with regard to the water? They all have can-and-will-serv letters.
Are you talking about the, are you referring to the rezoned sites? Do those properties have can-and-will-serves?
Yeah, you know, I think we're looking at the properties in particular with developer-owner interest. And it was my understanding that, that it had been verified that, that those properties do have water. But a letter that we got, at least from one, indicated that there was a property that someone thought didn't have a can-and-will-serv letter. So I just wanted to clarify. Is that something that we're requiring? Or are there other indications that water is available?
For the reasons themselves, we don't need to go case-by-case with a can-and-will-serv. That doesn't mean we don't have some information about water in the sites. And Andy Newkirk might, it looks like he wants to add some, some more information.
Sorry. Mayor Pertham Richards? Yeah, as Ann mentioned, you know, in part of our analysis, we don't require that can-and-will-serv at the rezon level. However, as part of applications, we look for that information. So that's kind of a little further down the road. And we did update, and you'll be seeing this as the project moves forward, updated information from the Galleta Water District that there may well be more water accessibility later in the year. So certainly, we wouldn't process a project and approve a project without that can-and-will-serv, but we're not requiring that at the rezon stage.
So is the state looking at that? Would they take issue or be concerned about things that we are listing here? Would they investigate and see whether water was available to see how realistic that would be?
So we wouldn't expect that at this time. You know, the water district did supply a comment on our adopted housing element to the state. So they're aware of the status of things. And we do have that program in the adopted housing element, and there may be some future refinement to it. But working with the water district and kind of facilitating that service as best we can, as we obviously don't control that decision-making to the Galleta Water District Board. But the state is well aware of that. And if anything, the situation has improved over time slightly with this wet winter. But that's been an issue that they've been aware of for some time.
Okay, yeah, and I know people are concerned that, you know, we're overreaching now, that we're looking, you know, we're being too optimistic because we've had a good water year and the moratorium will be lifted. But I want to make sure that people understand that, you know, that doesn't mean it's just full steam ahead, that we actually will still be looking at that and the state will be looking at that. And we'll be looking at that later when it comes to examine any specific proposal. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kariaco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, can we talk for a minute about the Galleta Valley Cottage Hospital site? So my understanding is that's a site that is, if I recall correctly, it's been kind of automatically, it's already, excuse me, it's already in our housing element that was adopted as a rezon for the parking lot. Is that correct? I believe there's 60 units being contemplated at that site.
I think you're referring to a site that is not included on our rezon list.
Councilmember Kariaco, it's not included in the rezon list. There's a vacant part of what we call the Holly Pat site. And so that's zoned medium-density right now. So it's included as a vacant site in the inventory, but not proposed for any change in that designation currently.
And was it in the housing element in the previous cycle?
Yes.
Was it in the housing element this cycle before that?
We'd have to look that up. I'm not sure.
So I guess here's where I'm going with it. When you have a site that's in the housing element for multiple cycles, doesn't that give you certain rights as a property owner to do more things with less input?
Councilmember Kariaco, that's right. Although there is a affordability, a higher affordability level that they have to meet to qualify for that.
What would that affordability level be?
It would be 20% lower income.
Okay, as opposed to our inclusionary, which would be like 5% very low, 5% low.
Correct.
So 10 versus 20?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Maynard?
Related follow-up question. But the, the rule about being in two previous cycles, didn't that start relatively recently? So if it was the last two cycle, I think it'd have to be the current cycle and the next cycle. I don't think the historic cycle would work. When did that kick in? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Really trying to understand. We'd have to look at when that bill was passed. I can't recall how recently it was passed. I don't, I think that, yeah, we'd have to look at it and confirm exactly when that came into effect.
Okay.
My understanding, if they're not including in the upcoming cycle, the two, the rule of two doesn't kick in yet, was my understanding. But we should verify that.
Any other questions? I have a quick question on, and I, I need a little bit help understanding if it's possible to do an overlay, affordable overlay or senior overlay for seniors' housing. Can you help me understand that a little bit more, what that would mean?
Sure, I can help you with that. And I should flag to you that Veronica Tam, our consultant, is not here tonight. She's at another meeting. But she did inform us about the, the risks associated with singling out one special-needs group, that there's zoning and fair housing red flags, big red flags that will come up with the state. And, you know, issues beyond just even can we count it in our, in our inventory, much bigger than that? You know, how can you zone and single out, limit one group in one location? So she has expressed a lot of caution about that.
Thank you for that. That helps me. Okay, I guess we can go to the public, if they have anything that, about the process or not any site that's been identified, but a site that they might like to identify that's not on the list? Or do we have any speakers?
I have four speaker slips for members of the public who wish to speak on this item and general public comment. I also have two hands raised on the Zoom webinar. And if any other members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand. Our first speaker in person is April Reed.
Hi, my name is April Reed. I'm trying to make this general and not refer to a specific.
Okay, thank you for that.
So regarding properties in general, I would say that if there is a housing project submitted by developer or owner that the city council believes are reputable and the people of Galleta do not generally object to, then the property should be rezoned to high-density housing. City council should consider all sites that are being proposed. If a reputable owner, developer, wants to build high-density housing in a certain area and the public does not disagree or object, it should be included on the list of properties to be sent to the state. At the very least, it would decrease the number of housing units needed in the area to make your quota, or whatever the quota is. Also, I think high-density housing should be spread out throughout the city. I know it's been discussed already. West Galleta should not have to bear the burden of the majority of the new high-density housing and rezoning. And finally, I don't know if this is true or not, but I was told, I may be wrong, that once a certain number of units is approved for a particular project, any project, it's very difficult to then reduce the number of units at a future date. So I think it's really important to get the number right at this point as we're discussing all of this and sending it off to the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Richard Foster, followed by Frank Arredondo.
You folks are a bunch of optimists. There's no cop here tonight. I think it's a little ironic that we're talking about widening streets in Galleta while we're narrowing Old Town Galleta. And if we're going to put Yardi there, it's really not the best idea to go down, but that's a whole different thing. You know, I'm really sorry that over the time we've had to develop this plan, we didn't look around more for smaller lots that could have been split. For example, I looked online. There's at least three churches that have one to two and a half acres on their property they don't seem to be using. Churches aren't doing that well in business. They might have been willing to sell off land for density housing on a smaller parcel that we haven't explored or recommended using public lands, for example. Maybe along Lake Los Canarios on the north La Patera side with wide access into the park would be a great place to put some housing in where people would have a backyard to play in and it would have somewhat less impact on some specific intersections. You know, the Elwood Preserve, let's put some houses in next to the Bluffs. What a better thing than putting some high-density, low-income on the portion of the Elwood Preserve right next to the Bluffs. But the effort to spread out high-density housing on smaller parcels, half-acre, one-acre parcels, would spread the impact of these throughout our city. It would help to integrate our city more rather than creating some kind of ghettoized situation where all the low-income units are in one, two, or three sites. That, it's preferable. I mean, how convenient, how unfair is it that out of the sites that you're looking at right now, and this is a little neighborhood fighting, but 50.7% of them are all in Elan Cano Heights within a quarter-mile radius? And that if you, and then in the 3rd district, we haven't had a representative, and we won't have one until next year. Literally, there's nobody speaking up for the people in El Rancho right now. If you look at the 3rd district as a whole and you throw in the portions that's down below the freeway, we end up with 768 of the high-density units that you need for 637 high-density units. 70% of high-density units are all in District 3, where nobody can speak for us. I do, it would be nice if the summary of the polls so far on the sites was available so that people could go back and reference it. I get confused going, which one was passed, what was passed by? You know, I'm a little disappointed there's not more intellectual curiosity, which we've touched on tonight, as to not just what's the number for the site, but the appropriateness for the site. Now, HCD has very specific guidelines of what they meant, and Councilmember Richards read them a couple meetings ago, you know? Things like schools, things like traffic impacts, things like it. I talked to the Galleta West Sewer District. They said maybe they need to increase the pipe, maybe they don't. But to get to the trunk line, you'd be excavating half-mile-long Kai Real. So you're going to make a two-lane road to one lane for construction. So Cal would have to bring two 660-volt KC-volt lines down, which we'd be digging down the line. So in some ways, this whole process is kind of a knee-jerk disaster at this point.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frank Arredondo, followed by Maria Gordon.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council members, planning commissioners. Thank you once again, Frank Arredondo. Chumash, I'm not going to run through my whole intro. I've got, I've said it before. We're here because you are submitting rezoning requests to the HCD. They did ask you to identify environmental constraints and how environmental constraints relate to the identified sites that you've suggested. I sent in a comment letter, which went in complete detail about this. But several of the rezoned properties that you're suggesting to submit to the HCD are being presented as high-density units. High-density units qualify for low-income homes, which we desperately need in this town. Rezoning to high-density properties can trigger a streamlined approval under Senate Bill 35. Senate Bill 35 allows development projects with certain minimum affordable housing guarantees to move quickly through the government review process and restricts the ability of governments to reject these proposals. Some of the comments from staff as well as councils seem to assume that during the project application process, they will address those impacts to cultural resources. Down the line, this will be an option to conduct studies and implement SEQA or other mitigation measures to preserve those resources. This is falsely incorrect assumption. Prior to the application of SP 35, there's a couple of things that the applicant must be due. Needs to be affordability, number of units, zoning, residential uses, location, demolition of residential units, historic buildings, prevailing wages, skilled-trained workforce provisions. These are the requirements to be streamlined. None of those say that there gets to be an environmental review. Addition to that, once this is, application is submitted, it is no longer under SEQA review. In other words, you don't get an archaeological review. What you do get, what you do get is there's a trigger in there that it requires the city to initiate consultation with the tribes. What you don't get is an archaeological survey, mitigation measures, redesign of the project, protection in perpetuity. None of that is available. It's just like, hey, do you guys want to talk? What ends up coming out of that is salvage archaeology. They say, we'll put a monitor out there in case something is found. If you find it, we bear. If you find it, we bury it. That's not a mitigation measure. That's just basically tossing peanuts. Anyways, this, there are over eight archaeological sites recorded within or adjacent to the properties that you've agreed to pass on. I cannot specifically name the properties because those sites are protected under law. I've included in my comment letter the site designations. You need to do a survey with the information center. In addition to that, Senate Bill 18 was carried out under your housing element, but as soon as that bill was, was adopted, that concluded it. Your rezon triggers a new whole Senate Bill 18 process, which is initiated by the government, which allows the tribes then to ask for all these studies to be done. This is all in my comment letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker in person is Maria Gordon, and then we'll go to Zoom speakers.
Good evening, and thank you for holding this additional workshop. I'm here on behalf of my son and daughter who've lived on Tulomni Drive since August 2021. They can't be here tonight. They received no notice at all of the City of Galleta's housing element review despite the inclusion of the Kenwood Village proposal, which their house backs on to that. And they only found out through a concerned neighbor knocking on their door last Thursday. So if you could please look into this and ensure that in future notices that do go out, they were told that it was sent out by email. Well, if you don't have email, if your address isn't with the city, you won't get the notice. So please, could you look into how the city notices sessions such as this and more broader programs? In addition, I see that there's supposed to be a review period of only seven days once the conclusions are reached about the rezoning. Could you please extend that, given that it is difficult for people to get to sessions and much time is needed more than seven days? Thank you to Mr. Richards for your article in Independent. That was very good to read about the challenges faced by the city. I do not envy you. We very much encourage the continued review of underutilized and non vacant parcels. Please go further than you have on that. In fact, I have a suggestion to make. It may not be practical, but if it is, picking up on the comment by somebody earlier, the idea that you go to the community and you say, where do you know that is underutilized? What have you got in the way of, for example, our accessory dwelling units? Do they fit within the plan? Could we get the community enlisted? Could you build a team and work with the experts on your planning, in your planning department and in the community about development and come up with more figures on a much more piecemeal basis as well as approaching churches and businesses where you can drive around? Out near the Ward Drive, there are office buildings out there with empty parking lots. Are there office buildings still that could be rezoned? So that's my general comment, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I do see three hands raised at this time on Zoom. And if any other members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak in general public comment, please raise your hand. Our first speaker on Zoom is Robert Zaida. If you would please accept the prompts that are going to be on your screen.
Thank you. Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Planning Commissioner Members. Just in general, Madam Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but you asked Mr. Rapp if there's any plans on doing anything. And I, I understood him to say, no, there's not many plans. Unfortunately, I would love to see plans in the works already for a third lane of Highway 101 from Fairview out to Glenanny. I would also love to see plans continued. They've been put off because of funding for an overpass at the Brandon area with a northbound exit and a southbound on-ramp. You have put out $17 million planned for a, the bike path to be fixed. I think you could spend a whole lot less than that and just put a little bypass around the area that's affected and call it good. The traffic on the freeway and Hollister will not get any better, no matter what you plan on, until things are widened or built. Another concern would be noise. All of these places are built within the airport noise complaint area that people seem to, to be complaining from, especially now Yardi across the street. Another concern would be in the past, a council member has asked for walkability to grocery stores. We had Happy Harry's out here in the Ellen Cantor area and somehow it couldn't be supported with the community here. So I think the current stores being used are enough for anything that's built out. Until you build out onto Bishop Branch, I don't see a need to, to build any more little markets or anything for any communities. If so, over on the Los Caneros area, it would have been built in that planning process with all the apartments there. And for now, I will say that's my general comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on Zoom is Cecilia Brown. If you would please accept the prompts that will be on your screen.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Members and Planning Commissioners. First of all, I would like to thank Councilmember Kurayako and Reyes Martin for their opening comments. I really appreciate what they have said. I believe that we are one community and shouldn't be divisive about this issue. It will affect us all. Also, I'd like to tell you that I live in the Northeast quadrant where one project is proposed. And as a longtime resident of the area, my observation is that we are not all white wealthy homeowners. To the contrary, as Councilmember Reyes Martin said, we are a diverse community. We live in condos, we live, we have a block long apartment complex. There's a very large senior community of over 300 units nearby. My second point is I have a question about other sites. The first is about a vacant parcel at the corner of Cal Real and Kellogg, right next to a bus stop. It's part of the Best Western Complex. And every time I walk by it, I just wonder why there couldn't be apartments on that, on that street. My second consideration is there, if we so badly need affordable housing, why the city doesn't give up one of its parcels? And that would be a city park, which is bounded by the north on Cathedral Oaks and by the south by the Dara Road property. Seems to me that would be an ideal site. There's two entrances to that. I don't know how many units you could get there, but I think that that should be considered if we're in a, such a difficult situation where we need to find property for affordable housing, that that might be a good, a good thing to do. And giving up one park probably would be for the benefit of affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last hand raised is Kalia Rourke. If you would please accept the prompts that will be on your screen.
Hi there, this is Kalia. I missed the first two meetings, so I apologize if this has already been addressed. I've been reading about how other jurisdictions have been dealing with this issue. And one consideration that has come up is the feasibility of the site to convert to housing, specifically the costs to property owners to convert. Some buildings and lots are more easily converted and more cost effective than others. And I love that other commenters have mentioned office buildings, commercial spaces, churches, et cetera. Wondering if this has been part of the rezoning process? And thanks to all of you for your work on all these hearings.
Thank you.
I know we have no more hands raised at this time.
Councilmember Casten.
Yeah, I was just curious about if you guys could comment on a couple of things. First, have we heard, we put a bunch of properties that were in our alternative ones where we hadn't previously been able to get contact or follow up with property owners. And some of them seem to be relatively supported by the neighbors. Have we gotten any headway on any of those? Is this too specific? You're looking at me cautious? Okay, well then, forget about that one then. We'll, we'll take that up later. But how about the property both that Ms. Brown mentioned, the Kellogg and Cal Real? And then the other property, I was just curious if you ever reached out on Hollister near In Touch Health, so it's further down near the Elwood School. Is, that was up for rent for a while. I'm just curious if we ever talked with them.
Some of the sites that were raised by speakers that you just described are, are maybe in our existing inventory. I think they are, we're, we're looking. But I would rather spend time and answer these site specific questions and whether or not they're in our existing inventory, you know, doing it the way we usually do thoroughly and accurately, rather than like one on one answer your question and potentially not be right. Because we, we really do need to look at our existing inventory and the addresses to be, to have an accurate response.
Okey dokey. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Maynard.
Very specific one. SB 35 was mentioned, and if a property is high density residential, it doesn't necessarily qualify it for SB 35, is that correct? I think it also has to have a, a high level of deed restricted affordable housing units? Or would RH alone trigger SB 35?
SB 35 has its own process, and we have applications and submittal requirements related to SB 35. And you can see them, they're online. I opened them up right here. So you can see all the various things, including travel consultation. So I think there was just, you, you just have to, when you submit, you'll know. You'll have, you'll get online, you'll be guided through the process to make sure that you're submitting your requirements, including all of the notifications and the materials, like addressing and doing the research on the site for the constraints. So it's not that it, if it does qualify for SB 35, it's not that it just gets around any kind of analysis. You just have, it's embedded in a checklist form.
But I, I guess my question is, is when does SB, can SB 35 be utilized? And if it's high density residential, is that enough for it to qualify for SB 35? Or must it also hit a certain number of deed restricted affordable housing units?
Yes, there's requirements on affordability.
Okay, what are those? Do you know those off the top?
Vice Chairman Maynard, I can step in. It, it changes over time depending on how much housing we have actually produced during the housing cycle. So right now, today, a project would have to propose 50% lower income. But again, that can change depending on how mid-cycle, how we're doing towards meeting our target. And that doesn't just apply to sites on the inventory.
And that changes based on whether we're actually seeing these low income units be built?
Never an easy answer with SB 35. It, it depends on how we're doing meeting our overall arena and then how we're doing meeting our lower income. So we're meeting our, like right now, we're meeting our overall arena. So we're kind of in this middle category of 50%. If we wanted to get in the, the other category where it had to be 100% lower income, we'd have to be meeting our lower income target as well.
And for SB 35, does it matter if it's medium density residential or high density residential in terms of its zoning?
Vice Chairman, I don't believe so. I think really the triggers are about the percentage of affordability.
Thank you, that was actually very helpful. And then in terms of when we would take a look at something like sore capacity, we would do that when a project is proposed and that would be a part of the CEQA process? Is that correct?
Vice Chairman Maynard, presumably part of CEQA, but it's also, one of our foundational findings is adequate services. That's for all projects. So if there wasn't adequate sewer or water, we could, we could not make a positive finding. So that would be, so certainly we look at build out and whether the sewer districts and the water district, et cetera, have capacity in, you know, planned capacity. Again, kind of at a high level analysis. And then individually on the specific sites, we'd have to be able to make that finding with, with evidence to support that.
Okay, so not knowing that information in the zoning process today, we would determine that when a project came forward and then make the determination on building at that point? Thank you.
Okay, no, I'm not seeing any more questions. And we have no more speakers, so I'm guessing that we might go on to each. The next segue would be discussion of Kenwood? Is that what we're going to be doing first? Since we ended with that and give all the folks that sat here for quite a few hours time to speak, that may have left last time? So is that, is that the route we should go at this point?
Yeah, I think that's a, a great approach to start there. And then we can, you know, bundle them by site after that. And then that gives us a chance to, to do recusals.
Okay.
And we can, you know, put whatever screen update that you want. We can leave it on the agenda, we can turn to the site table. You tell us what you need and we can go back and forth.
And I'll make a suggestion, and I will need to recuse myself. And, and Mayor Pretem Richards will run the meeting. But I, I am going to make a suggestion, which I've done on other meetings that I know there's a lot of speakers. If you have something that you could want to say their support or oppose, and it's only going to take a minute, you could come to the front of the line. If this, and if, if you want to speak the full three minutes, that's, that'll be fine too. But, and, and maybe you can make that announcement on Zoom as well. If they have something they'd want to say that's only a minute and we're going to hold you to that minute, then they can go first. And then the others are absolutely welcome to, to stay. I don't know if that, you'll be running this part, and so if that's okay with you? Okay, all right. So I'm going to recuse myself at this point.
Mayor Pretem Richards, I think we're just looking for a cue from you to start up with the public comment with the one minute.
Yep, so we're on the Kenwood property at this point, and we're looking for public comment. And as the mayor suggested, I think we'll take anybody that has a comment that's a minute or less here first. And, and then if you want your full three, three minutes, then we'll wait for you and have, have that later.
Okay, if there are any members of the audience or the Zoom webinar who wish to speak and have comments that will take 60 seconds or less, if you want to raise your hands, we can call on you and then we'll move on to our normal public speakers.
Okay, I do see a hand in the back over here. If you want to come up to the podium, please.
I was thinking that.
Okay, I'm sorry, we need you to speak into the mic. And you'll have one minute. And could you say your name, please?
My name is Ellery. I think it would be like, it's nice that, like, people still, like, need housing, but like, I think that animals that live there also need that space to live and survive and grow. And then there's also the plants. So I think it's just kind of hard, a hard decision to make. So I thought maybe, like, instead of just taking that area, maybe move the animals so that the animals also have a place to live. And I just hope that the animals don't get hurt and, yeah. So I felt like it's just kind of hard.
Thank you very much. Thanks for those comments.
I do have one hand raised on the Zoom webinar, Dustin Hoisteth. Just to confirm, this would be for 60 second public comments. If you can please accept the prompts on your screen.
Yep. Hello? Anyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
And is this for a 60 second public comment? Sorry.
Yes, yes.
All right, go ahead, please.
I'll begin now. Yeah, I chose the 60 seconds just because, you know, I've sent in multiple letters on this and I don't want to waste everyone's time. I think you know how the, what the chamber's position is. But my name is Dustin Hoisteth, Public Policy Manager with San Barbara South Coast Chamber, representing businesses from Galleta to Carpinteria. And I just want to reiterate the chamber's support for rezoning of the Kenwood site at 7264 Cal Real. I do just want to really quickly say that, you know, the chamber has been a longtime advocate for increasing housing stock in our region due to the threat. advocate for increasing housing stock in our region due to the threat that the housing supply crisis continues to pose for the local economy, and hardly a day goes by where the chamber doesn't hear from our local employers that the lack of housing supply is their number-one challenge to business vitality, due to the barriers it creates in maintaining a stable local workforce. That is why the chamber has added various sites to our Road Home, which we listed as potential sites to be able to address our regional housing supply crisis, and the Kenwood site is among those sites. That is why tonight, we urge you to rezone this site to accommodate for the much-needed additional residential units needed by our local workforce. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I have one more hand raised on the Zoom webinar, Michael Mahoney Pierce. If you can please accept the prompts on your screen.
Hello, thank you, everyone, good evening. One note, I haven't yet heard about this development, is we do hear much about the traffic at Stork and Hollister. Well, the traffic at Cali Real and Glenany, I consider to be the most unsafe intersection in all of Gleeda, and I think anyone who's advocating for this development has not driven that intersection between 7:45 a.m. and 10 a.m. on a weekday morning. The right turns end up conflicting with the exits from the freeway, it's, and I'm sure that some mitigation could be done in optimizing the traffic light patterning there, but it is already tremendously unsafe, and the thought of adding all these units, all these people, presumably, at least the majority of them commuting south every morning of the week, to me is quite frightening in that regard as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I saw no more hands raised for 60-second public comment, so we can move on to the three-minute.
Okay, thank you.
So our first speaker is Lauren Van Veelen, followed by April Reed.
Okay, I have a long paper, so hopefully I can keep this to three minutes. Thank you all for your time and energy. I know that this is very difficult for you, and you have a lot of pressure on you as well. I live on the corner of Baker Lane, and we purchased our home knowing about the Kenwood Village project, and 60 units seemed like a reasonable thing to have there at some point, but I never in a million years thought 284 units would be there. I've seen accidents, I've seen animals, I've seen people, I've seen cops get hit while dealing with accidents in that area, and it's just really scary. If the owner wants to do something to this land, I recommend a bike path to avert traffic from Cali Real to the upper neighborhoods. My kids will never be able to bike to school or walk to school on the street, and there isn't access up most of the neighborhood's dead end. Putting a food bank, agricultural area there where, you know, feed the community, do something else with the land, keep the animals there, and make it a much smaller-scale project. This is not going to help our neighborhood, it's going to cause a lot more congestion. Our school cannot handle it, especially with a corner project, 300-plus units, that's going to bring 500 to 1,000 kids to Brandon School, and it just, there's not enough room for these children. We need to spread out the plans, look at other options. I know 7780 Hollister was another option that would reroute traffic to Winchester, so it helps Glenany exit. I know we need to get approval from those landowners still, but I highly urge you to reach out to them and get their approval, and focus on just spreading out the density to other areas that would refocus some children to Elwood School, which I've heard has capacity for additional children. Just, please consider looking at other projects. The Shelby Trust and Glenany Golf Courses are other projects being, you know, considered, and that's just going to put too much density in one location. Considering the pressure that you all are under, we need to focus on what works now. Kenwood Village does not work now. The alternate locations at Kellogg, Fairview, Hollister, and Los Carneros, a smaller build at Calusa, and potentially 7780 Hollister, which does have capacity, spreads out the bills, so the concentration isn't in one area. Please start by reaching out to those landowners for approval, and scale some of these projects down so that they don't overwhelm our community. Please do not move forward with rezoning Kenwood Village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is April Reed, followed by Sam Eriz.
Hello, my name is April Reed. First, I just want to reiterate, as far as I know, Kenwood Village does not have a permit for water, if that makes a difference. Secondly, the traffic on Cali Real and at Baker is really horrible. I've sent you guys many, many articles about fatalities on that property, and that's just with what we have now, so hopefully you'll consider that. Traffic in Cali Real near Baker Lane already is listed as dangerous, with many accidents and fatalities. There's one lane of traffic in each direction on Cali Real at Baker Lane with no room for additional lanes. I noticed that the road's curved to the right after Baker Lane, going toward the 711, and there's no view of the edge of the street, going toward 711 on Cali Real at the intersection of Baker Lane. I spent several days standing on Cali Real and Baker Lane as I watched the cars drive on Cali Real and next to Cali Real on the US 101 Highway. I noticed that the cars on the highway were not passing the cars on Cali Real. Thus, it appears that the cars in Cali Real were driving as fast as the cars on the US 101 Highway, which means that we're driving at least 65 miles per hour, despite what the actual speed limit on Cali Real is. Though I'm not an expert, I would submit that the cars coming around the curve at 65 miles per hour plus may not all have the time or the feet to stop before hitting any cars that have stopped or slowed down to turn right into any road that goes into Kenwood Village. As a result, there would be even more accidents, injuries, and fatalities on Cali Real and at Baker Lane. Also, some people have stated that the Kenwood Village project should be rezoned because they allege the project is ready to go and can be built soon. However, the current plans for Kenwood Village only had 60 housing units. It's my understanding that new plans would have to be developed and approved for 284 housing units. Thus, it would take time for the new Kenwood Village project to be completed, further after that, and may not even be approved. So the idea that this is going to be something that's going to be built really soon if you approve it is most likely not the case. Thank you for listening to me for the many times I've spoken.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Sam Eriz, followed by Molly Rothman.
Good evening, council. It's my first time addressing a public forum. Want to read this. I stand before you as a homeowner at 37 Amador, which has primary access directly onto Cali Real. I must express opposition to the proposal of 284-unit project on Cali Real near the 711 store. It is inevitable that the added population from this high-density housing development, if permitted to be built, will result in added significant traffic toward roadway that is already saturated at the intersection of Cali Real and Glenany Road. Great luck is common. Some vehicles proceed there from the exits from northbound Highway 101, some proceed onto the, off Highway 101, onto North Highway 1, and so on, we know that. There's also issue of traffic from Dos Pueblos High School, which we haven't spoken about. Vehicles that travel across the bridge proceed onto the southbound US Highway 101, or the intersection of Stork Road and Hollister, which is quite infamous by now. The Honorable Mayor has advised that that intersection cannot absorb any more traffic. In addition to, I'd like to add here, that on a couple of occasions, I've had to stop in the number-two lane of US Highway 101 because of all the vehicles that are also stopped in the off-ramp ahead of me, leading to Glenany. Needless to say, I've said a few silent prayers as I've observed traffic approaching me from behind. It's an awful feeling. Additional population will further exacerbate this very dangerous situation. All of this can and should be avoided. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Molly Rothman, followed by Christine Fritz.
Good evening. My name is Molly Rothman. Thank you for listening to me. I am concerned about the, the proposition of rezoning this Kenwood Village area. I think it's not a desirable area to put that many people in. I know nobody wants to have more high-density people in their neighborhood. I don't mean to be a NIMBY, but honestly, that kind of density is just too high. 60 residents, maybe yes, you could handle. 200, that's a lot, that's four times as many. I went by there and looked at one of the condos nearby that has gone in not too long ago, there's 10 residents there. That, now you're talking about 20 times that, in that small, little parcel of land that is fed by only one road? That doesn't make sense. I'd also like, just as a general comment, to suggest you look at some of the commercial areas. I know they aren't ready to go as quickly, but honestly, there's a lot of retail area that is not being utilized. You have giant parking lots that could accommodate more than just cars. It could accommodate a lot of housing. And we lived in France for a year. Those neighborhoods all have, like, businesses at one level and apartments above them. There's no reason you couldn't have the dry cleaner on the base level, the, the physical therapist thing, and then you have two layers up above where people can live affordably. I think just looking at these areas where, oh, yeah, there's a vacant lot, let's go for it, I think that's a mistake, I think you need to really reconsider. Also, what's happened to the drive-in movie? I go by 217 every day, the board's falling apart, couldn't that land be used for some housing? Think bigger. And I think honestly, if we spread it out so that there's little bits of high-density in all of the parts of Gleeda, you won't feel so much backlash. People just don't want that many people in that small a space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Christine Fritz, and as a reminder, if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak regarding 7264 Cali Real, Kenwood Village, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you.
Hi, my name is Christine Fritz, and I grew up in Gleeda. I've never come to one of these before. You have wonderful air conditioning. So I grew up in Gleeda, I work in Gleeda, I've had, I worked at a local company, Toyon Research, for 33 years. I own a house on San Mateo, and beside, I think the density is really alarming, I'm also concerned about that. My reasons for being concerned are kind of twofold. I've got grandkids that go to Brandon, and, you know, it's already kind of a congestion situation on Cali Real. For years, I took my own kids to Dos Pueblos, and I know that, that whole run along Cali Real, that's pretty difficult. But I also rent out a room and, you know, in my home, and on the evening of April 26, 2020, my roommate Katie wanted to go down to 711 to get some root beer, to make a root beer float, you know, she never came back. She was killed on the corner of Violet and Cali Real. There's a little white bike right there that's painted white, yeah, that's Katie's. She was 59, and she's a great woman, and I just think it's dangerous. There's too much traffic on that street, and I think that's why I wanted to come tonight, not so much because I typically go to these, but I feel like, you know, it is a pretty dangerous street, and that concerns me very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Adam Behren, followed by Amy Deal.
Good evening. Thank you. I know this is a difficult decision, and I appreciate everyone giving this much thought to it. My name is Adam Behren, I live on Tuolumne Drive, backing right up to this property with my wife and our 16-month-old daughter, who loves watching all of the wildlife out there, to echo another young commenter earlier. I wanted to put forward my concern that with these processes, I know there's been a lot of pressure to put these things in, to put in housing. I am concerned that perhaps not as much housing could fit there as possibly has been proposed, once further considerations are looked into, such as a buffer zone far away from the creek, Ellen Canto Creek that runs through there, the fact that every rainy season I walk down there with my daughter, and I see water coming up out of the ground as the entire corner of that property floods, and also the wildlife in that area, including a pair of nesting Cooper's hawks and some monarch butterflies. So as further environmental and stability research is done on that, it perhaps may not be as viable a site, and it would perhaps behoove us to find sites that we already know can sustain larger construction because they've been used for that before and are now currently not being utilized in that way. I would share with all of us in this process a quote from Dumbledore. Sometimes you must choose between what is easy and what is right. I think the easy choice is putting a lot of housing units in a vacant lot. I don't know if that's the right choice. Thank you. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Amy Deal, followed by Mike Deal.
Thank you for providing the opportunity for a public discussion on the sites proposed for the housing element. I would like to draw your attention to some of my distress related to the proposed development at 7264 Cali Real. I am especially concerned about the increase in traffic and the decrease in safety on Cali Real. There are not appropriate provisions for bicycles and pedestrians on this already overcrowded road. According to the Gleeda Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, there is a serious lack of infrastructure in this area. The plan highlights the following existing conditions: high-volume intersections, high-volume roadways, bicycle and pedestrian collisions, and three schools in the area. The collision history is recorded in the plan from 2007 to 2016, and it included one bicycle fatality, numerous bicycle injuries, as well as several pedestrian injuries. And as we just heard, local residents are very aware of the other fatality in 2020 due to the hit-and-run on Cali Real near Violet Lane. This is a dark road, there is very, very little lighting, and it is especially concerning at night. This area is also listed as one of the city's least bicycle and pedestrian-friendly areas, and you think it's wise to add another 284 units to the area? That just doesn't make sense, and that number doesn't even include the units just a half a mile away on 60 Calusa and 7020 Cali Real, which would add even more traffic to Cali Real and to the Ellen Canto Heights area. One of the stated objectives on the Gleeda Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan is to encourage increased bicycle use and pedestrian walking for commuting and recreational purposes that is safe and convenient. Let me emphasize that again. That is safe, and by jamming 284 units onto the proposed property, you are setting us up for further tragedy and heartbreak due to an increase in bicycle and pedestrian collisions, in addition to vehicle collisions caused by the unsafe and overcrowded roadways. For the safety of the families already living in the area and the new ones that would be moving in, I ask you to reconsider this property. 284 units is too big for this site. A community of this size should be built in an area that is better suited for it. Further, the California Statewide Housing Plan recommends high-density housing in downtowns and commercial areas near transit. 7264 does not meet this recommendation. It would be irresponsible to include it on the site inventory. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Mike Deal, followed by Ken Alker.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Deal. I also live on Baker Lane, which is the street that runs immediately to the east of the Kenwood site. I hope to be less than three minutes, knock on wood, because I only want to speak to the parking issue. I think what I initially heard was for 284 units, there was a slide that was up on the July 20 meeting, and I think they were going to account for 140 parking spaces, or something along those lines. I don't know who drives half a car per unit, but I can tell you, it's, people, everyone pretty much has a car, and by the way, there's not going to be one person per unit, so it's going to be a lot more than that. Here's part of the problem, the three streets that run to the east of that, of that site are all private roads. Baker Lane, Violet, and Daffodil are all private roads. We own the property out to the middle of the street, so people are not allowed to park on our street. So there won't be any overflow parking on our end, so this isn't NIMBY, this is, this is going to affect everybody to the mountain side of that location, which is going to be Tuolumne. And I can only tell you that it's going to ruin what is already a congested area with a lot of cars by, by not accounting for enough parking in that area. It just is. All the spillover is going to go to Tuolumne and those surrounding, and... All the spillover is going to go to Tuolumne and those surrounding, and those surrounding neighborhoods above there. It's not going to go onto my street or the two streets below me. Because it can't. Half of a parking spot per unit is not adequate. So the 284 number is just way, way, way too much. If you go through with that amount of units and you don't provide the proper amount of parking, you're going to let the genie out of the bottle. And I think we all know that once the genie's out of the bottle, if you haven't accounted for the parking, you can't put the genie back in the bottle. So I really am going to ask you guys to consider getting the number right. Just get the number right and make sure there's enough parking. Ready, aim, fire is the expression, not fire, aim, ready. 284 units on that site is just absurd. So Galita is not LA. Galita is not New York, nor do we want it to be. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Ken Alker, followed by Amy Holtz.
Mayor Pro-Tam Kyle Richards and Council and Commissioners, my name is Ken Alker. I'm the owner of the Kenwood project located on Calerreal near 7-Eleven. To address the previous speaker, the 140 parking spaces is for the 60-home project, not for a potential future project. So there would be more than two parking spaces per unit. I bought the Kenwood Village property nearly 16 years ago in order to create housing for my employees and that my employees can afford and that my children can afford. I won't go into the details because I did that in the June or the July 20 meeting. So if anybody wants to know more about the background and the history, please look at that video. I am not an out-of-town developer who doesn't have interest in what is being built in town. I'm looking out for the quality of life of my employees. I think their housing is just as important as their jobs. I want their community to be livable, drivable, workable, and walkable, excuse me, and, and ridable. Over the past week, I've spoken to several of the neighbors for Kenwood Village, and I can say that the number one concern is traffic, as is obvious by the speakers who have spoken so far. I'm told that traffic in the mornings is pretty bad trying to get to Dos Pueblos, which is where my kids went as well. I want to emphasize that there is an existing traffic study on the project that was submitted years ago for the current project, and it and all the plans for the current project are available on the city website to this day. So if anybody wants to take some time to take a look at them, please do, and I encourage you to. The neighbors gave me, gave me input during the development project and I made changes along the way. The same thing will happen under a rezoning to RH. A new traffic study will be commissioned and whatever has to be done to mitigate traffic will be done. If the report states we need traffic signs, traffic lights, we will add traffic lights. If it states we need a turning lane, we'll add it. If we need to widen the road, we'll do so. The project has got to work for the new current, for the, for the current residents as well as for the new residents, both, I believe. I know a couple of people who live in Friendship Manor in the housing project, and I love Vista for seniors. I spoke to their management last week. While this project wouldn't, they need a new structure for the residents. And while it couldn't be moved to Kenwood Village under the current zoning, it could under RH. It's possible, since they do a lot of ride-sharing and they use buses and they are not super mobile, that dedicating two to four acres in the bottom might actually help reduce traffic in the area. It's just a thought. Neighbors have been talking about and asking about walking path through Kenwood Village. The current project has a dedicated walking path from Calerreal all the way up to Puerto and all the way across the top from 7-Eleven to the east. This will be the third housing element under which Kenwood has been considered. I really appreciate the unanimous support of Council on planning commission for the RH project. And I promise that, just as I've received a lot of praise for the current project, that I can design quickly a new project under the RH that will involve community input, neighborhood input, and council input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Holtz, followed by Karen Lovelace.
Hello, my name is Amy Holtz and I live on Violet Lane, which is east of Baker. I do remember specifically that night where we lost that woman at Violet Lane. We, my husband and I heard the noise. It is a very dangerous road. My, I live with my husband and my two children. They go to Dos Pueblos. We were a Brandon family. I have been a lifelong Galician and I am for, you know, everyone. I do think that there's too many, too many houses going to be going into that lot. A lower scale would be appropriate for schools around. I don't think that we could handle 284. I don't know where we could increase the road. It is a two-lane road with a freeway and houses. There's no other way to put more road. I would like to have a safer road for my children to ride their bikes. The traffic from Calerreal to Calaveras, all the way to Alameda to Dos Pueblos every day is crazy. My children will not ride their bikes to school because they say it's too dangerous and they'll walk. It is not appropriate. Let's try to find a more appropriate number of units for that space. I do think that before we go further, we need to look at the infrastructure, the schools. When I was young, there was El Rancho. So there are two schools there, but it's, I think, Montessori now. I, I just think it's just, it's too dangerous and we need to look at all of the infrastructure issues, the traffic, before we go forward with a 284-unit development. Parking is, will be horrible. There are no, if you go Calaveras and all the way up to Glen Annie, those, those streets are, are packed with cars, the people that live there. And I don't see where we could put any extra cars. So we would have to have appropriate amount of parking for, for whatever development is in there. And I would urge you to make it a lower density so that it, that everyone has a nice place to live and a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Lovelace. And as a reminder to members of the Zoom webinar, if you wish to speak regarding 7264 Calerreal Kenwood Village, please raise your hand and we'll call on you.
Good evening. I live near 7264 Calerreal, also known as Kenwood Village. The site proposed for high-density, 284 units on less than 10 acres. At 2.8 per household, according to the most recent census of Galita, that'd be up to 795 people, additional residents. I don't want you to think I'm a NIMBY, not in my backyard, but, nor can you, can the residents who signed the El Encanto Heights Neighborhood Alliance petition be demonized as NIMBYs? In the past 48 hours, over 200 residents signed the petition, which reads as follows. "We, the undersigned, ask the city not rezone 7264 Calerreal to high-density. Instead, approve the 60-unit development proposal awaiting available water. We ask that there be equitable distribution of high-density zones across the city. Furthermore, we ask that the city's housing element conform to the HCD's site evaluation guidelines." Over 200 people in the last 48 hours signed that petition. Therefore, okay, so we know, we're not NIMBYs. We know there's a housing shortage and there are thousands, perhaps millions of people around the world that might love to live here. I know we have an affordability problem. I also know that affordability is a buzzword that has successfully fooled the masses into believing that building high-density will lower the cost of housing when in fact it's a charade. Therefore, one has to admire Mr. Alker's stated desire to build, to develop Kenwood Village so that his employees can afford to live there. I would urge planning staff and this council to move forward and approve his submitted plans for 60-unit Kenwood Village development, as others have. After all, this would be one of the first housing sites to move forward when the water district releases water later this year. Why not take 60 new homes for people today rather than wait and hope something affordable will be, be built there over the next eight years? Who knows, it might not pencil out. Why not reward Mr. Alker's long-deferred efforts to house his staff? Besides, he could price the units or, or the rents at truly affordable levels. At least 60 units today would be a step toward meeting moderate and upper-level quotas. It's a win-win. If you won't, please stop telling us about housing shortage. We don't need to hear the whining and gnashing of teeth if you put off the ability to provide housing in the next year or two for a hopeful pie in the sky promise of affordability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lisa Sittori, followed by Richard Foster.
I have a strong no for the Kenwood development proposal for many reasons that have been spoken, the impact on traffic. Free, the Glen Annie exit's already dangerous, freeway is stopped way before the exit, and adding other lanes won't solve things, the stress on our already fragile water supply. And when you were kind of talking about that question and what the paperwork, I didn't understand that, and so I have a lot of mistrust. And I want to know what that's going to be, you know? I want to know the plan for that. The overcrowding of El Encanto Heights, which is a neighborhood that I live in with my partner sitting back there. Our small street alone, San Bergamo Drive, there are 100 cars on our street. Also, for the loss of natural sanctuary and open space and all of the above are going to be taxing on people's nervous system, stressing people. And they're, they're guaranteed more accidents, road rage, and violence. Initially, a 60-unit buildings, 60 units was proposed. And, and I'm feeling like that there wasn't a strong objection and that that has been agreed on. 280 some units is a whole different story. This means potential of 500 more cars, approximately 1,000 more trips through the intersection in a day. And those, you know, when he talks about more bus, people being on a bus, that's, yeah, that's, that was totally annoying. I wonder why people weren't informed of the changes along the way, why we had to find out everything through the Nextdoor, the Nextdoor app. I also read on the app that the 60-unit proposal only went through because the city failed to meet a deadline with it, with its own proposal, and the land was left up for grabs by private corporate investors. And I, I don't know if that's true. If so, it's not the people of El Encanto Heights. It's not for us to fix your mistake and take 50% of the low-income units. And when you tell us that we're all in this together and to not split our city, but then you specifically target District Four for 50% of the low-income units and not spread the units over other wider, higher income areas, I'm left to wonder what you touched on over here, which I thought was honest, that racial or other socioeconomic bias has been part of the decision for this site. The single most important function of government is to be a voice of its people and to protect people's rights. Please do your job. This project will not in any way benefit the quality of our lives. It will in fact greatly diminish it. And we are real people with real lives, so we're not a way for you to meet your numbers. And I'm speaking on behalf of many in the El Encanto Heights community who work multiple jobs and can't be here, or who are, have not been informed and will not know the impact of this monstrous development until it happens and it's too late.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Our next public speaker is Richard Foster, followed by Len Van Nostrand.
I'll try to talk fast so we can recapture her extra 15 seconds. You know, it's matter of perspective, when Kenwood Village first came along, whenever it was 10 years ago, it seemed a little bit big to me, you know? Because they wanted to change the usher setbacks from 100 feet down to 50 feet. They wanted to count the debris collection, the flood basin at the bottom of the property as open space. Now we hear they want to put the old people there. I mean, they're hoping, hope water comes up. But all in all, you know, I mean, 60 today is better than maybe something in the future in that it, but the biggest issue here is if you go through the HDC's guidelines for picking sites, Kenwood is probably the worst one you have anything in there. You got a couple of little losers, but if you look through it, I mean, I talked to the Galita Sewer District, they may or may not have to increase the main, but it will have to cut a half-mile line down the middle of Calerreal to tie in the trunk line. So Cal Addison will have to bury two, one or two 660 kilovolt cables down the middle of the street to power the site. Calerreal's only two lanes and there's really no room for expansion along the driveway. There's not even room to expand, have left turn lanes on the property. The freeway interchange bias is a disaster, yet the city has absolutely done no vehicle counts there for, since I think 2016. And Caltrans tells it's your problem and you guys tell us it's Caltrans's problem. The closest bus stop to this site is a half-mile away in either direction. And so, you know, for the poor ADA guy who has to get on a bus, then he can take the bus for a mile down to Camino Real and get on another bus down there. I think you've neglected them. Grocery stores are over a mile away. And perhaps you think that low-income people need to bar a liquor store in a 7-Eleven, and if we really work at it, maybe we can bring a vape shop to the area and they'll be perfectly happy. If this housing element fails on February 14th, it's going to be your fault because you did not pursue sites that actually meet the HDC guidelines. They will very likely look at this site and tell you, okay, you're trying to shill us again with some more bogus numbers. So I would urge you to find some other sites, preferably smaller sites. Nobody wants, you know, the Towering of Babel next door to them. But more importantly, Mr. Alker wants to build housing for his staff. Why would you stand in the way and tell him to wait more years when he can get going on it? Because SB 330 will allow him to go forward as soon as water is available. And I know you all want more housing in town, or so I've been told. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Tim Bullock, followed by Bronwyn Moore.
Timothy Bullock, Tuolumne Drive resident. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I also thank the previous speakers for detailing the serious traffic and parking issues around the Kenwood Village project. I'll just add that the interface between the parcel and the neighborhood is going to be problematic with the current proposed number, number of units. We already have a condominium complex on the western border of the proposed rezoning, and next to that, there's some relatively new housing that was finished maybe five to seven years ago. Neither of these or the 7-Eleven complex have access to the El Encanto neighborhood at the back of their properties, and it would be an issue for the Kenwood Village property as well. So there's no, no real good solution for pedestrian access in the back, and there are also no good, safe pedestrian walkways in front at Calerreal. 284 units are proposed in Kenwood Village. Of the 386 total units of vacant and vacant land that you showed on the screen over here, that is 73.5%, or basically three-quarters of the total vacant land sites that are proposed. I can see that it's tempting to put all these site units in one site, but that is not equitable. An extreme example, you could imagine finding one place to put all 386 sites. It would heavily impact one area while keeping everyone else happy. But this is just not equitable, and by the same logic, Kenwood is also not equitable. To put three-quarters of all vacant lot site units in one place, the impact is too high. I can see that it is tempting to make your numbers that way to satisfy the state, but in effect, you'll be trying to keep the pristine neighborhoods pristine while putting high-density units into other areas. I urge you to make decisions based on real issues: traffic, parking, crime, and safety, pedestrian impacts. I also want to urge you to apply those principles uniformly. So redlining, withholding of loans for certain geographical areas, withholding of rental to certain people, and withholding of sales of housing on the basis of disability, family status, or religion are all examples of the unequal, non-uniform application of housing-related policy. All of these were made illegal by the Fair Housing Act. I'm not suggesting that you are doing these things. But governments take the unequal application of housing policy seriously. You as a government body need to also take this seriously. Set your criteria first, then apply them uniformly and fairly to each project, regardless demographics, regardless of housing values, regardless of who gets upset, et cetera. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Bronwyn Moore, followed by Amy Rivia.
Hello, thank you for making the time for me to speak. Thank you to-
Hello, thank you for making the time for me to speak. Thank you to all the other speakers who've spoken so well. I'm a very tall person. So unlike the last speaker, I have, I had a really busy day. I'm a teacher. I was grading exams while this meeting was going on. After I went to the last meeting, I found that so upsetting, and I don't know my neighbors. I walked my neighborhood afterwards, and I knocked on doors. None of us know each other. And almost no one that I spoke to was able to come today, because they're all working, and they're all, they have young children. One woman was struggling with chemo. This is not a neighborhood where hundreds of people can come and storm City Hall. This is a low-income neighborhood. When I first moved here, I can't say that I, that my family has lived here 100 years. I came in the late 90s for grad school, and I stayed. A lot of people have done that. And I'm representing my neighborhood. I bought at the bottom of the market. Well, it wasn't the bottom of the market, but it was, it was the cheapest house I could find when I bought it. And I think if you look at the demographics of the homeowners on Toolumne Road and in El Encanto Heights, you'll see who you're targeting when you put such a monstrosity of a development in, in that area. You're hurting disproportionately working-class homeowners, and you're hurting the people that you would put in that area. I wish that I could brag about how walkable and how beautiful my neighborhood is, and how you will ruin it by putting this project in. That's not true. It's already not true. My neighborhood is not walkable. A council member last meeting described my neighborhood as a wasteland, and I actually appreciate that, because it's true. It's a wasteland in terms of food. You are going to put the housing development, the largest housing development on this proposal, between a 7-Eleven and a liquor store with nowhere to walk. Really? Really? And what kind of people say lies, damn lies, and statistics? What kind of people say that? It's people who don't want to look at the statistics. I appreciate you putting up the numbers. 789, 89 units for West Gleta. And then you look at our little neighborhood that does not have representation. I, you know, I don't think that's a coincidence. Guess what I teach at City College? Statistics. And statistics can be used really well to show that this is an extremely, it's an obscenely unfair application of where to put people. I believe in affordable housing. I want my kids to be able to live in Gleta, too. I totally believe in that. I don't think the developer's going to have trouble getting housing for his kids, but I worry about my kids. This isn't right. This isn't the right way to do things. It might be easy, but it's not right. Do not support El Encanto, do not support Kenwood. And for those of you who waffled about high-density versus medium-density for Dara, you better look in the mirror when you're thinking about Kenwood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Amy Rivia, followed by Maria Gordon.
Hello, I'm Amy Rivia. I'm actually a local educator. I teach at Brandon School, and I also live in the neighborhood. So I have a large investment in both my community because of education and because I have two children that will go to Brandon Elementary School, which is already at over 440 students. We are at max capacity. We have to put in more buildings to support any more students, which of course would be wonderful. But I think that putting in 284 units into such a small space in our community, as an educator, when I look, we know the haves and have-nots. I know the schools that are the haves and have-nots. I've been teaching 17 years. And if you're taking high-density housing, low-income housing, and you're putting it into a community that already services so many socio-economically disadvantaged students and families, as well as, you know, a lot of students who are multilingual students, I just want you to understand that we're looking at this, as you know, as Stuart Caston said, like, we need to share the burden. How is planning 59.7% of all proposed high-density housing in District 3 sharing the load? You know, let's share the high-density housing love with the perceived haves. You know, you know where they are. You know where they are. And I think it is a disservice to students to not be exposed to students of all abilities. And I think that it's really important to offer, you know, a lot of diversity in all areas, and not just in specific, you know, areas, specifically in El Encanto Heights, even though they're greatly loved and enjoyed. Also, to Ken Alker, I just want to know if your employees will qualify for these units, because doesn't that mean that they would be significantly low-income? I mean, I'm a teacher, and my whole family is moderately low-income. I have four people in my family, and I'm moderately low-income, and I can guarantee that I will not be able to qualify for one of your units. And if I don't, may I, you know, start to work for you so that I can afford one of your units if you, you know, are at 60 units. I guarantee you that I would not be able to. And I'm a teacher here for 17 years, born and raised, and I just think that, you know, you have to look at the bigger picture, you know. Housing is needed, but even as a moderately low-income family, we would not qualify for this housing unit, at 284 units, you know. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Gordon.
Thank you. And again, I speak on behalf of Jay and Jessica Gordon, who live on Toolumne Drive. Basically, please respect the petition circulating that requests no rezoning of the Kenwood Village site. 60 is already too many, but let's stick with 60, not take it higher. The planning application for this heritage farmland site was unfortunately completed before Measure G. Otherwise, the change to the land use would have required voter approval. Nevertheless, this is not a site for high-density housing. You've heard about the traffic. I'll reiterate, the school-run traffic, Dos Pueblos High School and the elementary schools nearby is already too high. Increasing the number of residents would also increase traffic visiting nearby bars, restaurants, and other facilities. New development would also increase traffic around the exits and entrances of the two gas stations, one very close to a freeway exit, the big intersection we've heard so much about. The Cai Real and Elwood Station Road intersection is already too hazardous. Cars heading south over Cai Real come over a blind hill before Elwood Station Road, and avoiding traffic for more housing would make driving into and out of Elwood Station Road even more dangerous than it is now. In addition, as you consider rezoning, please do include the larger context, even though Gleta Water District plans to lift the water restrictions. In March this year, the State Water Resources Board called on water agencies throughout the state to plan for 20% less water use. What does the future hold? Habitat destruction continues to put pressure locally on species needed to sustain healthy soil, water, and air. Native tree and grass species resilient to fire, and integral to the character of the local environment are being pushed out. The site itself is a remnant wild space and a valuable environmental resource. Any building on the site will result in the loss of open space, views, recreation, pollination, riparian habitat, bird, mammal, and insect habitat, carbon sink, natural drainage, and potential wetlands. Rather than rezoning the Kenwood Village site, the city should be calling on its residents to help create what could be the El Encanto Heights Preserve. Let's go in that direction. In terms of the housing element as a whole, again, we call on the city not to rezone it. Let's make sure that Gleta remains a good land. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speaker slips, but I do have three hands raised on Zoom. Our first speaker on Zoom is Tanya Shimmin. If you would please accept the prompts that are going to be on your screen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time. This will be brief and addressed at an issue that has not yet been mentioned. My concern relates to what would happen if there were an emergency. Should this area need to evacuate? It could be near impossible to get out due to the impact of total congestion. People could literally be locked in. This is unconscionable. Please, please consider this extremely important element of the situation that could be deadly. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on Zoom is Emmanuel Diaz-Haze. If you would please accept the prompts that are on your screen. Emmanuel Diaz-Haze.
Hello, Emmanuel, are you there?
We can come back to Emmanuel.
Okay.
For now, we're going to go to Robert Zaidah. If you would please accept the prompts that are on your screen.
Hello.
As far as Kenwood, I agree that 284 units is way too much in the area. There's a, it's on 10 acres, and proposed with 60 units. There's oddly enough, another 60 units proposed for an acreage of 14 acres, just north of there on Cathedral Oaks, next to the golf course, actually, the Shelby property. Oddly enough, I think high-density up there on Cathedral Oaks, which would have much better access to public transportation and whatnot, would be much better. And so if we negotiate between the two properties and say, hey, Kenwood, let's go with about 120 units, and put most of them up on top of Cathedral Oaks, let's give these guys a view. There's lots of access there with the Cathedral Oaks Road, and Shelby Property can take up to 220 units up there, and, and it works out well between the two properties. Parking in the units themselves, and this goes for all of them throughout the city, I hope that these developers are putting in enough power for charging of electrical vehicles in the future. They may not have them now, but it would be a shame to not supply them with those now, and, and have them set for the future. As far as water, thanks to the Gleta Water District saying, hey, cut back, everybody's cut back, our lawns have gone brown. And then they said, oh, we aren't going to make enough money, so they raised our rates. So now we have brown lawns, we're paying more for water. And now that we've saved all this water, we can now afford to have more houses put in. Somehow, it's a catch-22, and I just don't see 284 units going into Kenwood as a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to return to Emmanuel Diaz-Haze. If you can please accept the prompts that are on your screen.
Hello, Emmanuel? We can't hear you.
Okay, we are reaching out to Emmanuel, so maybe later.
We'll try to reach him. If he contacts us later, we'll allow him to speak. But for now, is that all that we have for the public speakers?
Yes, that's all the public speakers for now.
Okay. All right, we will go to Council, I saw, Council Reyes Martin, and Stuart Caston, and James Karyaku.
Thank you. I have really appreciated hearing all of the, the public comments. And, you know, one of the comments that I made earlier on in this process was, it was difficult to go through these one side at a time, even though I know that's really important, because earlier parcels, I think maybe were considered differently than later, later parcels. This is one where I think now that we've had the opportu, I've had the opportunity to have gone through in particular the conversations around all the parcels just south of the freeway in this area. There, I do have more questions that I'm asking myself in, in this decision. So there are a couple of things that I wanted to share. I'll start with schools, since I'm always so appreciative when we hear from educators. I am very sensitive to the impacts that our schools will have with development. If we think it's difficult to find sites for housing, it's, I don't think it's realistic that we will see new school sites built. So our existing school infrastructure likely will need to absorb additional enrollment that may come from any of these sites. So if I look at, you know, if you look at the current enrollment, in particular of the Gleta Union School District, they post enrollment numbers on their agenda, so it's all publicly available. There are nine schools in the district. The school with the highest enrollment is Isla Vista. Isla Vista welcomes students from Isla Vista, but also from University Village, Stork Ranch, Village at Los Carderos, so big parts of the city of Gleta. The next highest-enrolled schools are Brandon, Kellogg, and La Patira. So the schools within Gleta are already highly impacted. So that's something we absolutely should consider. I'm sure the state probably doesn't care about that, but I care about it. To the extent that there is existing capacity at our elementary schools, it was mentioned the El Rancho site. So there is an existing Gleta School, elementary school, that is a seven-minute walk from the Kenwood Village site. It is currently leased to a private school by the school district. That lease is not a long-term lease, and it was very intentionally, you know, not, you know, 20, 30-year lease, because the district wanted to ensure that if at some time that school would need to be reopened, that could be an option. That's not to say that, you know, that I necessarily still think that high-density is the way to go with this site, but that is a factor that I think is unique to Western Gleta, that there is an elementary school that could be available to meet needs of students, so that we don't see, you know, big spikes of enrollment, which will mean increased class sizes at Brandon, or even at Elwood if some of the students are asked to go there. I think infrastructure constraints are very, very real. Since our last meeting, I, I did, you know, I had previously driven by this site, I'm familiar with the area. I went again and actually parked and walked around. The speakers are absolutely right about Cai Real. There are some really serious needed infrastructure in that area if it's going to accommodate a big increase in residents. That is real. That is something that I would be very, very focused on when we see an actual project, and making sure that the environmental concerns on the site are taken into account as well. My concerns around, it was just mentioned, and I had written it before, emergency ingress and egress. My concerns around that are heightened when we're talking about a high density, given the infrastructure constraints that are there. You know, we can try to mitigate some of that, but there are certain constraints that will be very difficult to mitigate against if we have a very high density. So one of the questions I have for staff, you know, what was presented in the recommendation from staff was to take this site, which is currently zoned partially residential and partially ag. That RS zone is single-family, right? So it's part, partially zoned, single-family, partially ag. The recommendation was to go to high-density, and that's the 284. What is the number if it's medium?
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Reyes Martin. That number changes to 190, and that's in the moderate income category.
Okay. And I know that, you know, that presents challenges with our numbers in that low-income category, but we know that we will get at least 20% with our inclusionary zone. It's not as much as we need, or that we can count in this, you know, initial process. But as was stated, I think there are other ways that we can get there. All that to say, I am reconsidering my initial straw vote for high-density. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say, and then see where we are. But I really do appreciate the additional time that we've had to hear comment and to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Councilmember Kazin was next.
Thanks. So first, just as a reminder, the 60 units that's referred to, did they, is that just, was that approved? Or it was just put on ice until they had water and so there isn't actually? I'm just curious, what is in essence our baseline? Is there an approved project or no project?
Mayor Protem and Councilmember Kazin, there is no approved project, there's just a project proposal or application. So that, that project never advanced because there wasn't water at the time in order to allow us to process that application.
Okay. Second, I also wasn't clear, so my understanding is high-density housing is 20 units an acre. And they have 10 acres, so 30 units an acre comes out to 284. So why, why isn't it 184 and not 284?
Councilmember Kazin, so the range for, for these sites that we're talking about rezoning to RH, the range would be 20 to 30 and we count the high end. So it'd be the 30 times the acreage in our calculation.
But in other words, if we, if we use 20 units an acre or, you know, 21 units an acre or whatever it is, HCD won't count that as high density? Or they might count that as high density, what is the rule that we're dealing with here? If we had 184 or something like that, could, or 100, you know, 200, whatever, could they count that as high density?
So if the site was, or any of these sites were rezoned to high-density residential and the range for high-density residential is 20 to 30, you'll see as the count is 30 units per acre. That's the way that we're allowed to do the math and I'll throw in that the site needs to be over a half an acre in size or we can't count it towards lower income. But the math, again, is, is meeting HCD's expectation. But the range is 20 to 30, so they could come in with a project that's less than 30. Again, that's why we need to have that cushion in order to meet the state's expectation because we'd have to kind of make, if they came in with a project and that came online within this planning cycle, we'd have to show that we had that net difference between what was estimated in our housing element and what they actually produced. So for now, the number is counted at the higher end of the range.
Are we able, do we have the tools in a sense to be able to say if we wanted, well, we're going to have it at no more than, you know, 22 units an acre or something like that, count it as identity, but have some sort of ceiling? Is there, do we have some, some way of imposing some sort of restriction like that if we wanted to?
We could do that, we would have to address the fact that we don't have that zoning allowance currently. So we'd have to write up a program and we'd have to talk it over with our consultant as well. Looks like Andy Newkirk wants to say something about this.
Yeah, Councilmember Kazin, there's also, you know, depending on how, how we count the units, that, that minimum density is really critical. So unless we have a minimum density of 20 units per acre on a rezon, we won't count it towards lower income. That's why, to Ms. Reyes Martin's point or question about zone to RM, that range is 15 to 20. So the minute, we don't have a minimum of 20 units per acre. And I imagine if we, if we had a range for certain sites that were like 20 to 22 units per acre, that might, that might be of concern because it's really not providing flexibility at all for the site.
Right, but hypothetically, we could have, let's say, 22 to 25 or something like that and impose something like that that would give us that buffer.
Yes, and Councilmember Kazin, I would just add that if we were to do something like that, we would still be well within our arena. So right now, we're overshooting that target and we can look at that overview slide again. But at the present count, we're something like 250 units over the minimum required arena. So we do have flexibility here and of course, it would be possible for the council and commission to consider an alternative site instead of this one if.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying, though. I'm saying we want to be able to count it at 20-plus and get the credit for, for high density. Except, rather than have it at potentially 30 units, you know, by reducing it close to 100 units, it might be more amenable to the, to the circumstance and we still get the housing that we need.
I understand, and we would still meet our target.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. And I believe Mr. Rapp is probably still available, but I wanted to clarify the traffic. It is a brutal road to be talking about adding a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of cars. And so I guess I was curious if, what he had to say as far as the adding additional, what's the capacity of the road for these, for, you know, well, some assessment if he's familiar with it.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think obviously the, there is the right-of-way there on Cayer Real is very constrained. I don't believe that there would be room for, you know, for additional turning lanes or some, or, or something of that nature. I do think the addition of sidewalk and that sort of thing is something that would be possible and needed. But I also don't necessarily, and again, without, without knowing the particulars and having analyzed it to determine whether they would actually need turn lanes or not. But just, just off the cuff, I'm not certain that that is something that would rise to the level of being needed. But sidewalk, I think would be feasible and, and needed.
Well, sidewalk, but how about for cars also? Let me ask it this way. We're talking about, just now, we've talked about three different levels, if you will. 60 units an acre or 60 units in total, 190 for what I was just talking about and 284, which is in the current proposal. What can the road, what can it handle? What's, what's the more appropriate level or is there not a particular burden?
It's a difficult question to answer because we don't have all the data in front of us right now, but, but in general, the roadways themselves, the, like the mid-block roadways themselves are not the constraints. The constraints are the adjacent intersections and those would be the areas where, because that's where the most conflicting traffic occurs and that's where you're, that's where you start to see the impacts of, of additional traffic. And that's something that would need to be, again, would need to be analyzed and would be analyzed as part of any development proposal.
Okay, and by the intersections you're talking about, Cayer Real and Stork and then the 101 off-ramp, for instance, too, right?
That's correct.
That's just brutal also. And just sort of the last question is sort of, so parking is something that is, that was one of the things that was raised, but as I understand, that would be fully incorporated in the context. They would be providing adequate parking for whatever number of units is imposed or authorized.
Our parking standards are in Title 17 of the Guelph Municipal Code and they would apply to their projects.
Okay. I guess that's it, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Karyak.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I almost said Madam Mayor out of habit, sorry. So a couple of comments and then a few questions. First of all, to the folks that were objecting to the quotation that I was using about statistics, I was quoting Mark Twain. That's a Mark Twain quote of a Benjamin Disraeli quote. And the argument behind it is you can use different statistics that are very true to make incredibly opposite and contradictory points. For example, if you change the modifier rezoning to just housing, you get a very different picture of where all the new housing is going to meet the 1,837 units that we need to come up with to satisfy the state. But if you insert the modifier rezoning, then a different area is providing the maximum amount of the burden. So that's what I was trying to say very inartfully and unfortunately for me in front of a statistics teacher. The second thing I'll say is I'm sorry, I thought this was a safe space for quotes because Dumbledore got quoted a few minutes ago and I am here for it. And now just a couple of questions. So when, when we, this is not the first attempt. One of the public commentators mentioned we had a couple of failed attempts. So let's, let's be honest about the fact that we had a couple of failed attempts. We did, but a number of the other public commentators encouraged us to focus on underutilized retail spaces, office, vacant office buildings, et cetera. So my first question is, isn't one of the significant sites that's in our new updated housing element that we're discussing, a 100,000-square-foot, underutilized office building sited on eight acres? I'm saying that so that there's no conflicts.
I think I understand where you're going with this. And yes, we have, our first cut a couple of times with our housing element is to use our existing build-out that's allowed in our general plan, focusing on underutilized sites and these, you know, shopping areas in particular. And that capacity is real, it's real now. And we presented that to the state and it was, I wouldn't, rejected is kind of a strong word because they don't do that. They don't just reject it, they just critique it repeatedly. And that's their way of saying, you know, we don't, we don't like this approach and we don't have enough evidence. And they did tell us that and in some ways, we can't get them the evidence that they want because we don't have enough mixed-use projects to defend ourselves. So there is, we do have a site in our inventory, there isn't a conflict there. And it is an underutilized site, so we're demonstrating that underutilized is working, it can, it is, it has worked. Shoot, we have, we have a mixed-use project right in front of us now. It's, and again, it's just that situation where we're, we're working with our capacity. We thought we had it, some expectations change along the way and we are where we're at. But yes, we do have a great example of an underutilized rezoned site in our inventory. That's part of your rezon package.
Councilmember Karyak, that response bears emphasizing, so the first submittal to HCD, the housing element that this council adopted back in January, relied exclusively or predominantly on underutilized sites and that wasn't adequate. So now that's why we're back, that's why we're talking about revisions, is because the way the state's framework works and the way state housing law is set up, there is a bias toward vacant sites. And vacant sites change the way in which certain numbers are counted and the evidence that we have to present. So even though we agree with that speaker's comment and, and we think the focus should be on underutilized infill sites, we're not allowed to rely exclusively on those and we have to now look at vacant sites. And so it's, we're unfortunately, you know, at the mercy, if you will, of the state and the, and the current framework.
Okay, but essentially, just to kind of say it in plain language, we tried two different times to not make everyone in this room feel this way.
Yes.
Thank you, I love the brevity of that answer. Another public commenter brought up the, the drive-in and said, well, why can't you rezone the drive-in? The West Wind site. Now, my recollection is that that site, which is on Kellogg, at the very end of Kellogg, the problem with that site being a potential site for housing is that, well, I think there's actually a couple of challenges. But I think the main one, oh, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm.
That may be within 1,000 feet of me, so I think we should be careful about naming other sites without recusals.
Okay, thank you.
Good reminder, thank you.
I'll, I'll just say that airport safety zones affect Old Town, depending upon what site you're looking at. I'll say it like that. Kenwood, so was this site in the previous housing element?
Yes.
Okay. And we had talked earlier in kind of more of a hypothetical way about how things change based on state legislation. Trying to remember which, which bill it was, I think it's AB 1397. Ms. Garibaldi, am I on the right track? I think it was 2017 law.
Councilmember Karyak, that is correct.
Okay, so how does that legislation affect a property such as this one in terms of their ability to potentially have more discretion on their end and less discretion on our end when it comes to the process?
Hi, Mr. Newkirk is telling me that that site actually wasn't used for, towards lower income before. And so that actually changes the analysis under AB 1397 because that applies to the sites that are not deemed adequate for lower income.
Okay, that's a really helpful answer for me, thank you. I, I think this point may have been made earlier, but if, if Kenwood, Kenwood were to come out of the housing element or stay at only medium density, would we need to upzone another site to make up a certain number of units? Or could we submit to the state without it based on what we currently have discussed?
We, the way the, the rezon table is set up, and we can put that up on the screen and share it, is we have a bit of a cushion, so we could change that from medium or high-density, which is a count of 284 at the lower and move it to medium density. And that would be still, that'd be 190 units, not counted at the lower income. We could do that and, and if, depending on, on what you do with another site, it's, it's running into our margin, so we would then, in that case, have to look at some other sites that, from the alternatives that were not, that were considered but not included.
Let me speak generally then. If we, if we were to keep this one out, moderate or not, in terms, I'm thinking just specifically about the lower, lower income, would we have to upzone something else?
You could need to, depending on what you do with the other sites. As it currently stands, if we, with the, with the table that's in the, on the screen that we had shown you before, with those numbers, we would be looking at another, we would have to look at another site.
So it looks like we've put the, the table, table up on the screen now and the answer is no. If the only change is to this site, we would not need to rezon another site.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and of course, we have to look at this as a totality and we'll have, look at other sites.
My, I think my last question is about state bonus density. What zones does state bonus density apply to? Does it apply to both medium density and high density? Does it apply to any other residential districts? Like, you know, if you have a single-family residential, could that be upzoned using state bonus density? What are, what, what land use zonings does state bonus density get to go into effect for?
We don't get to count the state bonus density in our arena math, if that's what you're asking.
That wasn't my question, my question, sorry, my, let me be clear about my question. Setting aside for the moment whether we count it or not, the lived experience of the neighborhood can be impacted by state bonus density, right? The number of units actually, that actually happen on the site. Setting aside counting it for our purposes for planning or not, what zone districts can, can state bonus density be applied to?
Councilmember Karyak, it applies broadly, so we even have a, a project could even come in in a non-residential district that can utilize density bonus on a mixed-use project. So it's probably applicable.
Okay, so a proposal for 60 units could then get higher because of state bonus density. A proposal for, you know, if it, if it got, if the whole thing got rezoned for medium density, he would still be able to avail himself of state bonus density. And while it wouldn't be counted in terms of our initial trying to satisfy the state, it would add to the number of, the unit count on the property if a project was eventually approved, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a sense, just for the audience, a sense of scale?
In terms of the potential increase?
What is, yeah, what is the maximum density bonus? I think it's 50%, depending upon how you choose to get to different levels, different types of affordability.
It, it varies based on the income level, so it can go. So it can go, it can go to the highest, I'm trying to recall the highest capacity that it can go to, but I, I don't want to misquote the statute, but I can confirm for you. But it definitely increases the, to your point, it increases the volume of the density overall when a, whatever the project is maximum, whatever the maximum zoning is, density bonus can significantly increase project based on what income category is at issue. But we'll confirm the, the highest percentage.
Okay. That's it for me, thank you. I guess just, just to close, you know, since someone else said it, I'm also willing to relook at my earlier vote, but I also want to see how some other things go. But I'm, I'm also reconsidering my initial vote.
So Councilmember Kiyaka, I wanted to correct an earlier response that I gave. Under the assumptions in this table, if we were to eliminate Kenwood Village entirely, we would have a deficit of low income units. And, and by my calculations here and, and my colleagues can correct me, that deficit would be 33 units that we'd have to make up, which we could do from another site. For example, another alternative site. So that, that's where we would stand.
Okay. Thank you. That, that kind of matches what my calc was, so I appreciate it.
Councilmember Kiyaka, I pulled up the statute to confirm, I think you said 50% and you had that right.
And I think that has a lot to do with what, you know, if you go lower income on the base density, you add a high number, right?
Correct.
Thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
Just a couple of clarifying points. I heard reference to our inclusionary ordinance in terms of looking at sort of the actual reality of what may unfold over time. But my understanding is that our inclusionary ordinance only includes 10% at the low and very low levels. And then there's 10% above that. So when we look at our inclusionary's ordinance, it's, it's in actuality, if you're looking at the low and the very low incomes, it's really 10, 10%. Is my understanding, is that correct?
Yes.
I, I realize we have this intersection between talking about zoning and then talking about sort of the eventual reality, but I just wanted to clarify that. Because I think it's, it's so apparent in our community in terms of our need for, for truly deed restricted, affordable housing for our most vulnerable residents. And then if we have this like 30 or so shortfall, if this were removed, isn't, depending on how things shake out, but my understanding, right, the state is also sort of looking at this ratio of our, our vacant and underutilized zoning. So to the extent that we remove 284 from a vacant site, we're slightly leaning a little more on the underutilized. If, if nothing else changed, it would slightly increase our reliance ratio wise on the underutilized site. So it strikes me that that also creates some inherent risk in terms of the state review.
There is, but, but there's, they would, you know, require for underutilized discount factor, for example. And, but we have the property owner interest, where there's property owner interest, that's a huge evidence in our, you know, in our housing element to describe the site. And so that's critical. And so we think we can count, but count these particular lower income sites because of the property owner interest in particular.
Understood, sorry. I'm trying to, it's hard not to like stay within our parameters. But I'm aware, generally speaking, that we don't have owner interest in all, in all contexts. So that creates a challenge. Okay. I just wanted to clarify those points, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
I can hold if anyone who hasn't spoken wants to. Or, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I wanted to also speak about sort of the, I guess the broader, broader issues a little bit here too. So as far as, you know, doing the easy thing or the right thing, I would say this is not an easy decision anyway. I, I think, I think that's part of why we've taken so much time to make these decisions is, is because it's, it's difficult. There's a lot of things to consider. You know, the things, when it, when it comes to a site like this, that really affect me is, is just the sheer need for housing. You know, renters are really feeling it right now. I'm, I'm especially conscious because I, I just got a letter of my rent being increased today by quite a bit too. So, you know, I, I don't know how many, any else are renters here, but, but it's, it's a feeling and squeeze. And it just, it just keeps getting worse and it really does feel like we, we need to do something about it. We know that people are being made homeless by cost of housing increasing. It's something that is very correlated with, with rates of homelessness. I mean, it's really simple if you think about it, if you can't afford to live anywhere, then, then you have no choice. And then finally, is the jobs housing imbalance? It's the environmental, you know, tragedy that is, is the amount of commuting that people have to do. The amount of traffic on highways that's generated because of the separation between where people get to live and where they have to work. And, you know, we are seeing arise all throughout California of super commuting, which is, you know, more and more absurd commutes. All of these, I think, are really critical issues that really push me towards, towards, you know, more housing for, for Galita and trying to accommodate that how we can. The other, you know, minuses in this particular site, you know, traffic safety. I really, I really care about that and I really appreciate everybody sharing their stories. It was really hard to hear about this, somebody was, was killed in Cairo and the amount of people that have. I think that it's sort of, I, it feels like we're locked in a little bit of a vicious cycle sometimes in which, because it's dangerous, we don't want any more people in, in the neighborhood. But, you know, there's so many dangerous roads that it's kind of sounds like, you know, we, we shouldn't bring more people anywhere. And I, and I think that's something that we shouldn't accept as a community. I, I think we shouldn't accept dangerous roads being a fact of life. I, I think that's something that we should try to address. And maybe if we can do that, I hope that we'll be more welcome to welcoming more neighbors, knowing that they'll be safe. You know, to, to talk about schools, putting housing and affordable housing near schools could be a great opportunity for children to, to be autonomous and be able to, to walk or bike to school. And the fact that if it's true, you know, that increasing housing near a school would make it more dangerous for children going to school, then we're doing something wrong, you know? And, and that we, we ought to do what we need to do. And there's, there are a lot of things that we can do to around school zones during school days to, to make that possible. You know, kind of talking about a vicious cycle, I've heard many stories about not wanting to drive your child to school because of the very real danger from being hit by a car. And then, so you then have to drive your child to school by car. And it feels like we're kind of trapped. And so I think that we as a city should plan on, on fixing this and plan on making that not the case. And then, you know, we should plan for that when we're planning for housing. That's difficult and that's ambitious, but, but I think it's what we should do. And that's all for me for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I know Commissioner Maynard had her hand up and then I saw Jennifer Fullerton. And then we'll go back to council.
No easy decisions tonight. There's a number of things that I think about going into this. Much like Councilmember Reyes Martin, I quite appreciate the opportunity to go back to the beginning of the list now that we've seen each individual site. I've struggled with not being able to talk about these sites as a city. And I know we have to work through the recusal process, but as a planner, as somebody who comes from, to the planning commission, looking to think about the city as a whole, it's very difficult when we go site by site. And I think that creates a lot of the tension that we've been feeling in terms of going, arguing between neighborhoods. I, I went into this looking at a lot of the numbers between the different parts of the city to try to create some sense of balance. And I am interested in trying to create some sort of release valve in the West because that is where I do see a lot of development, even in accounting for existing developments. Other, our, our sites that were identified, that are part of our housing element, but that we're not talking about tonight. And then the list here, there is still quite a lot going on, on the West side. And I, I do think they're taking a larger bear, a larger component of the traffic, especially given the project that we're not talking about tonight, of the golf course project that will hit that same intersection. And so we do have to think about the cumulative impacts there. So I'd like to create some relief in the western part of Galita. I am concerned about traffic safety, though with a larger project, we're more likely to be able to advocate for and be able to negotiate for traffic improvements from the project developer when we, when the project comes forward. Smaller projects don't tend to pay for much traffic improvements. A larger project's going to pay for more traffic improvement. So that's something that we can also be looking at. I don't know if the golf court project is going to pay for any traffic improvements, if that housing element isn't approved in time for that type of negotiation work. If that golf course project goes by builder's remedy, we won't see traffic improvements coming out there. We'll need some way to get some investment in traffic here. So I'm thinking about these components. You know, I, I was debating in my mind between residential medium density and residential high density here. I don't think we can go back to single family housing for this spot. But as we run the numbers and we take a look at this, I don't know that we can go 100% RM. It's just too many units that we're looking at to lose all 284 of low, to be able to count in our low income number. I, that really concerns me. One thing we could consider, though it is awkward planning and we've described it as having some challenges, the property is still two different zoning designations and is already a split property. So we could take a look at whether we look at one part of the property as RM and one part of the property as RH, so that we could at least maintain some units we can count in the lower income category here. But I don't know that we could lose all 100, all 284 towards the count. I think that is too challenging here. Our housing element's been denied twice and I'm, I'm not particularly comfortable with skating right at that number, right at the limit, especially if we're considering adding alternate sites where we already know the builders are not interested or actively have an interest in building something that is not housing. And so we, we went through all the alternative sites last time. I don't feel like we've got a B team ready to go here. So I think we have to work with the sites that are on this list. We can play with the densities, but at some point we've got to, I don't think there's another site we're ready to go with. We can't drag this out too much longer on that. This is going to be a built site. There's, this is an open space, this is in a park. You know, the, I think we do have to respect that the owner is already structured to be able to develop this space, particularly on the backside of the space that's already RS. I don't know that we can, can wish it into being open space, so that, that's a, a component that I worry about there. I, I do struggle because I think the, the traffic in this area is probably the, the hardest of the numbers I've seen just from a factual perspective and, and from comparing the traffic statistics I've seen from the different neighborhoods. So at this point, I'm leaning towards either an RM RH split, being open to which side is which, or potentially staying with RH somewhat begrudgingly, but just the, the potential here for, for the RH is too high and we need it to be able to meet these numbers. I can't see doing it another way.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fullerton?
Thank you. I also, I mean, I think everyone here struggles with this. It's not easy and no one wants to have to go through this. But in listening to Commissioner Chapman, I'm usually someone who is kind of a realist, like people want their cars, people are going to drive. But in listening to his comments today and in the previous meetings, some of what he said really resonated with me, especially, I think, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before where you said, we need housing. Yeah, like every number, every home counts, whether it's the low income or the market rate, like we're hurting, we need it. So I think for me, going between like the medium density or the high density, that's a lot of potential units to lose. And especially knowing that we're not going to get all affordable. Like I would love for the developer to commit to doing a higher amount of affordable. And I would love for the developer to commit to going to the lower of the range. I mean, no one is saying we have to go to the 30. I, I would love for that, we don't have a project now, so we can't speak to a project. But like, there is the possibility we could go to the, to that lower range and still keep it within our count. So unfortunately, I think that's where I am. I do like Vice Chair Maynard's idea of the split, you know, potentially doing the bigger part RH and the lower part RM. I'm totally open to that, but I think we need to keep a big chunk of this RH. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller, I, I had seen your hand up earlier, do you have any comments? I, I think you're on mute still. Are you able to unmute?
There we go.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, yes, of course it's a struggle, just as everyone is saying. But, you know, the whole element of where this started from is workforce housing. Housing for the people that live in Galita. We really, really, really do need that. This site, I understand, listening to all the comments from the nearby neighbors, there's, there's a lot of concerns. Maybe I'm being too simplistic in thinking this way, but if indeed, you know, within the timeframe that this, let's just say it's, stays at RH and everything gets built and people move in and so on and so forth, and they're living and working in Galita, that's terrific. Isn't that what we want? We want people to live and work in our community and be a part of our community. You know, invest in our community in more ways than one. And it seems to me that, you know, if they're not driving from Ventura or Oxnard or Santa Maria or Alamoque to get here, it's, it's gonna reduce the traffic in some way, shape or form. I mean, yes, everybody's still going to have their cars. I mean, California, you, you just can't get away from it. But at the same time, just as COVID changed us so much, COVID changed the world, changed Galita. I think that by adding more workforce housing for people that can live and work in Galita might also change our environment and our way of thinking and our way of living. You know, California has been this long commute, you know, living, you know, out in Riverside and working in LA. I mean, it's crazy, you know, what people do here as far as living and working in different areas. But you know, we can, we can really create a much better community that, you know, lives the life of living and working in our community. If that takes residential, if that takes RH, yeah, maybe. But I guess in retrospect, I do, because there are so many other struggles in traffic and safety and whatnot. Yeah, I kind of like the idea of the split if, if that can be done. So that's it. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. I haven't had a chance to make some comments yet, but I'll, after that. I, I first of all want to acknowledge, you know, we heard a lot of speakers talk about the safety concerns of Chi-Rial and I certainly acknowledge that. I know that I personally don't enjoy riding my bike on that area. I know that cars go very fast. I know it's dangerous. I know there have been multiple accidents and even deaths on that. So I take that very seriously and I do take that into consideration as we deliberate here. I also think that there are potential, as was mentioned, potential improvements either to the roadway or pedestrian infrastructure or bicycle infrastructure that can be considered as part of the planning and development process. And for any proposal, for any development in the city, we pursue that as, to the best we can to get the improvements that we're able to from the developer to improve the neighborhoods and the areas. In particular with this, I, I think it was brought up that there's a potential connection to make on the north side with the Puerto Drive, either as a pedestrian or bicycle connection that would connect up into the neighborhood and to the high school and to other areas and potentially also on the west side on the Elwood Station Road, north of the, of the 711. But I, but I hear the concern, so I want to make sure that, that people know that we do, we are listening and this is part of our, our considerations of what we're doing. Another point I wanted to address, it was, it's been brought up a couple of times about representation and who's represented in the city and who's not. And I do want to point out that of the 10 of us here on the City Council and on the Planning Commission, five of us live in the eastern area of the city, in Districts 1 and 2, and the other five live in the western area of the city in Districts 3 and 4. So there is a wide representation, a cross-section of, of us that live across the city. And, and these decisions are, as we make them, we have in mind what's in the best interest of the entire city. We, we're not split up and balkanized as a city and, and we don't look and care only about our neighborhoods and our districts. We all have the bigger picture in mind and this is something that we are looking at. And I know that, that that's not going to be, you know, helpful if we don't make the decision that you want us to on, in your neighborhood, but it is something that we try to keep in mind and we do try to keep the big picture in mind there. With regard to this, I, I, I would support having a reduction and I think it was brought up of whether we could do a split or somehow split the zoning so that we had a mix of, of different zonings and I think that would, might be a good option and I would definitely look into that. I am concerned about completely changing it to the, the zoning that would not allow any of the lower-income units with regard to how the state is counting that. So whether, so, because if we look at, looking at all RM and then we lose the 284 out of the lower income, I'm concerned about that. I've looked at the list of alternate sites. I don't think that I see any obvious ones to make up for those 33 that we'd be short. So at this point. So before we did that, I would like to, you know, hear what others are thinking at this, you know, how to proceed, but that's, that's where I'm landing on that right now. So, and then I saw Councilmember Reyes Martin and then back to Councilmember Kiriyako.
Thank you. There was actually something that Councilmember Kazdin mentioned at the beginning of our meeting that reminded me of something. It's a positive thing. Our letter to the county. One of the things that we also criticized to the county was their almost complete reliance on property owner interest. And we criticized the county for, you know, allowing property owner interest to be the driving force, the only force. And so, you know, I know that we went through our lists and if we were to move Kenwood to medium, I would be open to going back to look at some of those particularly vacant, underutilized sites where we had not heard from a property owner and, and move through the process of, of rezoning them to kind of have them respond to us. For me, that's actually consistent with what we told the county, that they should look at where is it appropriate and not just where owner interest there was. That's one thing. The other thing that I don't think we've talked about is, and it was mentioned, but city-owned property. And we haven't talked about city-owned property like the Triangle property right across City Hall. I won't say more about that because I don't know if we have recusals, but that is another property that we've not talked about yet. I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Was I seeing a nod that there would be a recusal for that property?
Yes, if we talked about the Triangle parcel, Commissioner Chapman, hopefully that's not news to you.
Okay.
Wouldn't be.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Kiriyako?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Kind of noodling on, on the idea that was just kind of brought forward, there were a couple of components to it. I think for now, I'm wondering what, what it would look like if we did single-family on the portion of the parcel that's the frontage, that's closest to the street, and then feathered in more density on the, the back parcel and do some high-density there. What, what would that look like in terms of the site and what it would yield in terms of units? I don't expect you to have it at the, the snap of a finger, but maybe you could kind of research that.
Let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Are you saying the, the southern portion of the site would be the single-family where it's currently the ag designation? And then the, the portion that's single-family residential to the north would be the high-density residential?
I thought it was medium family in the back.
Oh, it's ag on the south and single-family on the north?
Okay, let me make, maybe my direction sense isn't working very well. So there's the portion of the parcel that is up against Chi-Rial. And my understanding is that's the ag portion?
Yes.
And then the portion behind the ag portion, I thought was medium family.
It's single-family residential.
Single-family? Okay. I was wrong.
So if we did do a rezone from the, the northern portion, the RS to RH, we would get somewhere around 150 units? We'd have to run the math, but somewhere in that.
And those could be counted as low income?
Yeah, and then the agriculture portion, if we did a rezone to single-family, then you're, you know, in the tune of around 22 acres, something like that. We would have to run the math, but just the ballpark. So it's, it's, it's helping the situation by the RS to RH as far as where we can count the units in the lower income.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm still thinking about how I feel about kind of changing gears on the, on the other, on the other sites, just because we went through them one at a time and said, "It would be a great site, but there's no owner interest." And we kind of did that again and again and again. So I'm, I'm still kind of wrestling with whether or not I would want to open up that door. I'm not necessarily completely against it. I can think of one site that I won't name that might make a lot of sense and might help us get there. So I'm still thinking about that. Let me ask a general question because we have more than one city-owned property. Well, you know, actually, let me ask it about.
Councilmember Kiriyako, if you don't mind me interrupting?
Uh huh.
I wanted to make sure that it was clear. If we did the rezone for the northern portion of the Kenwood site from single-family residential to high-density residential and then the agriculture site to single-family residential, we would make the Rena math that we're seeking. The buffer would be just a little bit less, but, but we would make our Rena math.
No, no, I understood that. I just don't know if everyone's going to agree with that, so I'm trying to think about other possibilities.
Okay.
So I don't believe anyone has a conflict with this other site, but I won't name it just for fun. So there are some, generally speaking, there are some city-owned sites, right? Without naming any specifically. My recollection is the state doesn't just look at a city-owned site and say, "Oh, okay, you're going to build it. Cool." They want a higher level of detail. What is the schedule? What's the budget? All kinds of, of things. I've read other HCD comment letters that have talked about those things. Can we just talk really briefly about what would be the level of work that staff would need to do in order to put a city-owned site or sites in play for the housing element to try and, you know, not only meet our housing needs, but also maybe give some communities some relief?
Okay, speaking in, in general terms, we would have to go through analysis. It's not the same as private property ownership. We'd have to go through the surplus map act, et cetera, and we would have to have a game plan in front of us in order to be able to count the sites.
And then would it be problematic for us with the state? I'm just trying to make sure we don't create new problems because we're trying, you know, we've been kind of narrowing down. We now meet most of the statutory guidelines and they've told us when we do these remaining things, we will be in substantial compliance. So I don't want to open up new avenues of, whoops, what did we do? Right? So would it be problematic with the state from staff's understanding if we simultaneously rejected private property owner interest in doing high-density development on a site and turned around and instead did it on one of ours? Would that get us in a hot water or would, do you think they wouldn't care? Because they'd just be like, "Cool, high-density is high-density. Housing is housing."
I think it would be a challenge to add in city-owned property and include the evidence that the state would be looking for without a detailed program and even with this detailed program, which we could, we can write. It would, it would still bring, beg the question and for HCD as to what category we would be counting it towards. And that's not to say that we, we can't build housing on city property. Of course we can. That just because it's counted in the housing element under the regional housing need allocation math does or, doesn't mean the other sites can't be developed. It just means it's for counting purposes and the math accounting. But for city-owned property, we would have to write a detailed program that's outlining the steps that we would have to undergo in order to rezone a city property for housing and we wouldn't be able to count it for the lower income is my understanding.
Okay, Councilmember Kiriyako, one other piece of information which I think is relevant that you may want to consider regarding ownership interest, and my colleagues can speak to this in more detail. Ownership interest is really mostly relevant for an underutilized site. It is less relevant on a vacant site. And Mr. Newkirk or Ms. Wells can speak to that in more detail if they wish.
I, I think that, that's the case. It's, it's critical to the underutilized, but it is important for the vacant as well because it's one of the, one of the criteria that we're, we're using to show active interest in housing in the, in the region. So it's important, but not, not the same as underutilized.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kazdin?
Thank you. I was curious, this one, this site also has some environmentally sensitive areas, there's a stream and so forth. Are they, where are they located?
We don't have a map of the constraints, but I can look on the screen. You can see there is a drainage on the left side of the parcel or the west side of the parcel that runs on that western edge.
And, I mean, how much if, because we've been talking right now about separating and different zoning on the two areas, but if we were all trying to exclude some of the environmental sites, are they in one of those areas, let's say RS or AG more than the other? Or are they really running north-south?
I think generally speaking, without doing an analysis, it's running north-south. And in any event, to be clear, that, that any kind of creek, for example, is protected and the buffer is protected. So the, the density would have to be moved and shifted away from the, the resource.
Let me ask you guys if there's a preference on your part. So I had offered the idea of that kind of a ceiling of, you know, of saying we're going to impose a cap or a ceiling or something like that of 22 to 24 units an acre. Is that easier or more difficult to work with and thereby, of course, get our high-density, but without actually living with high-density per se or 30 units an acre? Is that easier to manage than if we did the sort of split process of taking advantage of different sort of housing densities in the two parcels that are there?
I think there's one way we could do this and if we, if what we're trying to do is get units counted towards lower income and if there's different ways that we can get there, and we're still talking in the range of, you know, around 200 units, if you're, you know, splitting the rezone between the two sites that we just said, or adjusting the density and creating kind of a new carve-out for a density range, if we, I mean, we'd probably want to talk to the property owner to see what kind of design will work best. But if you give us that instruction, we can, you know, take this back and we can work through different ways where you're going to get the same unit count in the lower income, but how it plays out better with that site, the different options, we can probably work with that.
That would be my inclination then. I do think that the 284 seems like an awful lot for that area and, and, but I'm conversely also reluctant to drop down to where we can't count anything. So some sort of middle ground like that, I'd be supportive of. And giving the property owner some sort of flexibility like you were just describing seems helpful.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on, I, I did get a note that the, the speaker from earlier was, as we, as I understand, is still on. So can we just try to see if he's available? That would be Emmanuel Diaz Hayes.
Emmanuel Diaz Hayes, if you still wish to speak, please accept the prompts that are on your screen. I know you had your hand raised earlier.
Unfortunately, we tried, okay. Back to the Diaz here?
Yeah. So the most recent proposal is, is add many more questions for me. So we're, so we have these different zones that are within our zoning ordinance, but now we're proposing to create a new zone or create a restriction that would only apply to this one property? How does that work with the timing that we're talking about here too in terms of submitting the housing element to get a new structure created and then incorporate into a housing element with, there was a mention of a seven-day review period? How does this timing work? I'm, I'm struggling with this.
So Mayor Protam and Vice Chair Maynard, I think Ms. Wells, the, the gist of her response was that we can approach this flexibly and we can get to the result you want and we can bring you back something that meets the intent. And, and we'll look at the exact tool, the easiest way to get there. I suspect, I, I agree with you, that, that a simple split zone is probably the easiest. It's probably easiest for us to just take the categories we already have, RH and are either RM or RS and apply that to the site. But Ms. Wells wanted to indicate that we have a flexibility as to how we reach the result you want, if that's the direction you give us.
I'm not sure if that was the flexibility that Councilmember Kazdin was looking for and, and so I think it gets us back to sort of using the split that's there. I, I am very worried about the HCD pushback. We, we have tried to push the boundaries with HCD twice now and gotten some, some very strong pushback from them to go, to skate it right at the edge of our limit and then go back to properties that we don't have buy-in for. If we get a third one denied, I can't imagine that projects aren't going to go to the builder's remedy next year. It's, we're, our. next year. It's, we're already at the edge of not being able to weigh in on our own housing projects, not even having meetings like this. We're talking about noticing, but we may not even have planning commission or city council meetings on a project if it goes to builder's remedy. I don't think we can run the risk of a third submittal not getting accepted. And so I think we need to do some RH on the site. I would even be open, I think a blending of RH and RS is going to be really hard to develop in my mind, but maybe that's an assumption. I think there's companies that you can have to bring in that'll blend RS and, sorry, RM and RH together and can sort of hit that balance because those are two related projects. I think if you're trying to mix RS and RH at the two ends of the spectrum, it may be harder to find a builder for the project, which is a little bit more of my gut than my knowledge. And so I don't know if we can actually ask, if it'd be appropriate to ask the applicant to weigh in on that. But that, that gets, I'd worry a little bit about whether the applicant could find a builder at that point. It is ag, and Galita has a high priority for protecting agriculture. So if we are looking at that type of split and not getting RM out of it, I might actually lean more towards ag in the front and RH in the back and leave the ag as is, or do a combination of RM and RH.
Okay, I, I do want to just make note of the time, and this is our first property that we're talking about tonight. So I, let's try to, if we can kind of work toward a consensus or resolution.
I just, I just wanted a clarification that it doesn't, that sort of cap idea doesn't necessarily have to apply to only this property. There are other properties where it also could be relevant without being specific.
Yes, Councilmember.
I want to, I know we've probably asked this question in multiple ways. I want to really understand this. So we're not, we're not making final zoning decisions tonight. This is a straw vote. So what I'm hearing from staff is if, if you hear from us this idea that Councilmember Kasdan has raised, that is there a way to ensure that a project is on the lower end of RH? Is there a way to do that where it's still zoned RH, we still get the, the units, but we ensure that the development is on that lower end? That staff would go investigate that and then bring that back at a future meeting?
Councilmember Race Martin, yes, there is. The simplest way is probably to continue to split-zone it with a portion of the site RH and a portion of the site something else. And so we can certainly do that. And then our path forward would be to submit revisions formally to the state. And at the same time, we would be bringing back those revisions through our public process, through the planning commission for recommendation to the council. And we would hope then that those would align, that what we brought back to you would be in line with the direction and the feedback we're receiving today.
And we wouldn't need to decide right now what that combination is necessarily?
No, I mean, as long as we have general, a general sense of what it is you're looking for, and I think we do. I think what I'm hearing is kind of a consensus around this idea of coming back with essentially a lower total unit count on this site that addresses some of the neighbor concerns, but where at least a portion of the site is RH or meets the, the 20-unit-per-acre threshold so that we can count a substantial portion of lower-income units on this site.
Can we try a test vote?
Yeah, I was thinking that this might be a good time for a straw vote. For the, I'm just going to say for the proposal, that the way Mr. Imhoff just described it. So was that clear that, 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 no?
I think it was clear to me.
Okay. Does someone want to take a stab at it?
I, I want to take a stab at single-family residential on the parcel in the street. Can I get the, can I get the map again so that I can actually just use the right designation?
Give the landowner some flexibility.
I'm not sure. I'm trying to make a motion to the extent that we are doing this. Just need the slide. So I'm going to propose as a straw vote, and I might lose, and if that happens, that's okay. I'm going to propose that it's, that we do RS on the Ag 5 parcel and that we do RH on the RS parcel. That's, that's my suggested straw vote.
Okay, should we go? Do you want to discuss?
I mean, that isn't a rephrasing of what Mr. Imhoff said. That's, that's the original proposal you had. And so if the interest was, if he said the herd, a kind of consensus for that specificity is not consistent with what we were talking about. And to, in my, and I don't think it's helpful to just exclude the potential for the landowner to weigh in on what makes sense. Our goal was essentially, as I understood, find a path that'll get us around 190 or something like that. And that'll allow us to count a certain amount of high density towards this property, but that we can enable you whichever way, whether it's the, you know, high density on the ag part or high density on the, the residential part that has its zone right now, but to give that option. And if, in fact, that idea of a cap was more attractive to use that, I mean, my, my hope would be that, well, it's, we want to get the, the numbers that'll help us hit our target. We want to offer the, the staff and the landowner the flexibility.
I will interrupt you in the interest of time to say that I'm now inclined to ask Mr. Imhoff if he has a better idea for how to phrase the motion.
Well, so I did leave it a little more open-ended, but we can work with that motion. Or if you'd like to add, or equivalent density, then we have that flexibility that Councilmember Kasdan is suggesting, and we'll look at that and bring you back something with, with equivalent unit counts and densities.
As amended. And, and just as a comment, I think there's a way to do like an internal courtyard or something that would allow for a reasonable transition from one to another. There's, there's got to be a way to figure that out.
Okay. So if I'm understanding now, the straw vote that we're, that we're being asked to take right now is that we'd be directing staff to look at some alternative type of split zoning that would get us the equivalent number of units, but that there may be some different options that would come back and that it would be fully vetted then through the planning commission and city council rezoning process of what the particulars of that split would be.
Correct, yes. And we will, again, be making a formal submittal to HCD in the near term before we make it back to the planning commission. So we're going to give it our best shot and hope that it aligns. If there isn't perfect alignment, we can straighten that out on the back end.
Okay. And I saw a couple hands. Commissioner Maynard? Councilmember Race Martin?
I just wanted to clarify. I, my interest is not in seeing the equivalent number of units at the 284.
No, I think the equivalent would be
The lower.
Lower mix. So maybe around 180.
Yeah, my interest is in seeing a much lower overall unit count and seeing what flexibility there is to still be able to count some of them under RH, but for it to come back substantially lower.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we're disagreeing with each other, but staff will shake their head if I'm wrong.
The way that we are looking at, if we were to do the rezoning as proposed or the equivalent, you're talking about 190, 200 units ballpark estimate. So that's compared to, if it was all zoned, medium-density residential, it'd be about 190 units, or at high-density residential for all of it, 284. So we're still talking in that 200-unit ballpark.
So the, the community would experience it as a all-met-medium project in terms of the unit count possibilities, but it's not a high-density all-the-way-through project as could have been and would have had.
Yeah, and the way the motion is, it would be the, the same as RM, but we would be able to count some for RH.
That's the hope. Okay. Council, Commissioner?
I, I'm going to say that I'm actually going to vote against this, but not because in, in concept, I actually would have voted for your original motion. I, I'm struggling, the motion that you started to make before we went back into discussion, with amendments, I, I think we're, I think we're getting laid into the night. We're feeling the time and we're starting to rush the process. And I think what's being proposed is too vague. And so I can't really say whether I would support it or whether I wouldn't. Instead, I, I would rather see a cleaner motion and then I could support that.
I'm willing to withdraw my motion. I mean, this is a straw vote anyways, wouldn't have to be that formal. But I will return to my original motion, single-family in the front, RH in the back on what is currently the RS parcel, and RS on what is currently the Ag 5 parcel.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of going the opposite direction, I'm sorry to say. I like the flexibility and I'm, I'm, for me, I'm not convinced that having the lower density on the southern side along the, the road is, is the way to go. I think that more of the single-family homes are to the north and to the east. And it seems like to me that we might want to consider more of the high-density along the south, along the Cuyahoga. So that's why I actually preferred the more open-ended flexibility for, to allow staff to kind of come up with something that then could come back or maybe give us options later. I would, I would hate to get stuck into a, you know, down a road that is not really what I'm.
I'm afraid we're making the perfect the enemy of the good. What can get three votes from council members?
I would support what Mayor Protam Richards just said.
In that case, I will too, and that's three of us.
Okay, yeah. So that, that would be going back to the more flexible options.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Katie, I tried.
Okay, so we have a kind of straw vote motion, not really a motion, I guess, but just to kind of gauge us, do we want to go through? Should we do the, okay, let's go through the planning commission first. Yeah, Councilmember, Commissioner Miller, I see. Your hand raised. Are you in favor of that motion?
Yes, I am in favor of that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I am in favor of that motion.
Can I, just, just to clarify, that this is some flexible way to have the equivalent of 190 with utilizing RH? Okay, yeah, I'll support that.
Yes, I support. I do not support.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Race Martin?
Yes.
Okay. Kasdan?
I support it.
I still support it.
Okay. I support it as well. Did we get past that? Are we through? Okay. All right. I think we'll take a five-minute break now. We'll get the mayor and we'll come back in a little bit.
Okay, we're going to bring this meeting back to order. And I think we have everybody. Ms. Garibaldi is coming right in right now. I, my question to staff and council is, what, I would really like to end this. Not, I don't, I don't really want to go to 11 o'clock. So what can we expect? What are we trying to accomplish in, say, the next 40 minutes or so?
I think we got the direction that we needed for Kenwood, and that got us a decent unit, lower-income unit count with that high-density residential. We'll figure out the details of that, and it will be in the revised draft housing element. I think it's still an outstanding conversation
About Dara.
About Dara.
Yeah.
And that the part that's, that's outstanding is the, the split vote on high-density residential. And so we, we just put a kind of a placeholder in the table that was on the screen before. But having some direction on where to go with that split vote, I think, would be very helpful to us.
Yes. Commissioner Maynard?
Are there other sites that we have speaker slips for or that the public wanted to revisit? I just, before we get into details of Dara, I just wanted to see, is there any sites other than Dara that we need to talk about to complete this project?
I have one speaker slip for the property at 469 South Kellogg Way, and then five for the Dara Road property.
Okay.
And Mayor and Council and Commissioners, I just want to make clear that as it stands right now, we do have the, the minimum number of units that we need and the densities we need to meet our nominal arena. In fact, we exceed that by some amount. So just if you're keeping score, we, you know, anything else that, that we add, we are in even better shape.
Okay. Thank you for that. Question?
If, if we're moving to Dara, I did have a comment that.
Okay, well, I think somebody has to recuse themselves. Recusal here.
I will restate, because my home is in close proximity to the Dara parcel, I am subject to the Political Reform Act, and I must recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, so we'll give you a couple minutes to exit.
I think we're looking for the start of public comment for the Dara Road site.
Yes. Okay. I have five speaker slips for the Dara Road site. And if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak regarding Dara Road.
And excuse me, I'd like to do the same thing. If anybody has something they'd like to say or can say within one minute, they should raise their hand first or come up to the podium first. If not, three minutes.
Any members of the Zoom webinar, please raise your hand. We'll call on you. And we'll start. If there are any members of the chambers who wish to speak for 60 seconds, please raise your hand.
Okay.
And there's no hands raised on Zoom yet.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Lana Harper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. I would like to say that Dara property is not a civil, civil rights issue. It's a density issue, a greenhouse, gas emission issue, a global warming issue, basically a neighborhood safety issue. 127 or 84 units are not appropriate for a car-dependent neighborhood where citizens commute through curvy or narrowed neighborhood streets. And we are a car-dependent community that does commute through our neighboring streets. Early Sunday morning, I walked the neighborhood streets of Arundel, Berkeley, and Kellogg, to Kellogg, Stowe Canyon, Dara, Pembroke, Huntington, and Devon, and I counted 233 homes and 473 visible cars. They were, this did not include garage cars. So I repeat, it did not include the garage cars. So the average without the garage cars was two visible cars per home. Consider now the four acres on Dara-Stowe Canyon property. 127 units with two drivers per unit would be 254 cars. 84 units with two drivers would be 168 cars. That could easily total upward of 1,000 trips generated through neighboring streets each day as the folk travel south to business and freeway. Now, I will mention the need to park these cars. Where will that be? Do the math, measure the available space on adjacent streets, and how fast will these cars travel through the neighborhood? I don't care if the inhabitants of the units are from a low income or a high income, or from the north or south of the freeway. It's just not appropriate plan for a four-acre property in a confined, car-dependent neighborhood. And folks here don't often do the 25 miles an hour in the neighborhood. Two cars were demolished on Sunday afternoon at Arundel Road in Cathedral Oaks. That is why I don't go north on Cathedral Oaks. When I live one home away from Cathedral Oaks, there are cars on Cathedral Oaks parked to the left and to the, and a rise and a curve on the right and a divider, then inhibit my view for safe entry onto, onto that roadway in busy times. So again, I say high and medium density is not appropriate for Dara-Stowe Canyon property. And as a group, we will address this issue with the state if need be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christie Smith, followed by Charle. Our next speaker is Kristi Smith, followed by Charle Jenkins.
Hi again, I was here last week, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Commissioners. Having had a week to think about some more, here are some additional thoughts. This appears to be the only property or proposed site that is completely surrounded by single family homes. And on that subject, my neighbors and I were very offended by one council member's cavalier reference to them as McMansions owned by privileged people. To say that we are privileged is a stretch. There is a significant number of people in the neighborhood who bought long ago, just as the 625 Dara landowner did, and are not high income or privileged. McMansions insinuates that we built them that way. Not true. These are Galita tract homes. All of them are occupied by hardworking people, just like the people referenced who lived in Pacific Oaks and the Kenwood Project areas. And, excuse me, and might I say that at least a portion of those people have one or more allies on the council looking out for them, whereas we can't even be represented by the elected council member from our own district. We were given two history lessons on the zoning of our neighborhood. One, I could not follow. One invoked the Fair Housing Act. We were told that we were a historic relic of a time before civil rights and the Fair Housing Act. That is blatantly false. The Fair Housing Act, which came after the Civil Rights Act dates to 1968, the vast majority of, if not all of the homes surrounding 625 Dara were built after that. The property itself was zoned, as it is currently, a long time after that. I was raised in Galita and in fact, live only a mile from the modest house I grew up in. I'm a product of local elementary, secondary, city college and UCSB. My husband and I have worked hard to remain in this area, whereas my mother and others like her were able to stay home to raise their family, it took two incomes for us to stay in Galita and raise ours. Whereas my whole college education was only a few thousand dollars, our child's college education was exponentially higher and we had help from family to fund this. This is all to say, we are not privileged. We work hard too. We pay the bed sales and property taxes that help run this city. Another point I'd like to make is that we neighbors do not, or do understand the housing dilemma that you find yourselves trying to solve. In fact, I participated in the Galita Lead Program last year in order to learn more about how the city works. And it was there that I learned about the type of mandates being put on the city. Even armed with that knowledge, I don't agree with this particular property. As neighbors, most of us were aware of the possibility of adding up to 12 homes on the Dara property. And although we weren't excited about it, we understood that it was the property owner's right. We were shown drawings numerous times by the property owner himself that looked reasonable, but for some reason, they were never built. Now we feel helpless, though we learned that this decision lies solely in your hands. It feels like the old bait and switch, first 12, then 80, and now up to 127 units. And those numbers, has anyone stopped to think that that is between 700 and 1,000% increase in the number of homes proposed?
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charle Jenkins, followed by Greg Jenkins. And as a reminder to members on the Zoom webinar, if you wish to speak regarding 625 Dara Road, please raise your hand and we'll call on you.
Good evening, thank you so much for letting me speak. I've rewritten my letter a gazillion times, even just sitting here tonight, listening to other speakers, so I don't want to waste your time with just repeating things that have been said over and over and over. I've lived on Arundel Road for more than 30 years. And while I understand the depth of the need for housing, I believe that it's poor planning to rezone this specific property at 625 Dara Road to medium or high density. It's only four acres. And to put 127 or even 84, where is all that going to go? Up? Are we talking four stories to accommodate that? It's ridiculous. We've, it's already been said that it's the only proposal that's in the middle of a neighborhood. You have to weave through neighborhood streets to get there. There's nothing, it's not direct onto a thorough fair. The traffic, as it's already been stated, on Arundel and Dara Roads going onto Cathedral Oaks is very dangerous, it's difficult. Yesterday, we had a collision, actually, there were three vehicles involved. And it was serious. There were a lot of people, and we had just walked across the street from church, minutes before that happened. I'm thankful that nobody got hit, a pedestrian didn't get hit, but that's the type of traffic we're talking about. One thing that I wanted to mention is that I too grew up, as I said, I grew up here on the other side of the freeway. And I lived in a neighborhood where we had nothing, we had very little to no income. Sometimes we struggled to put food on our plates. I didn't grow up in privilege. I wasn't labeled in poverty, but I didn't grow up in privilege. So I've worked very, very hard all my life and that, to live in our neighborhood. So I did take a little bit of offense at that too, as others have stated. One last thing I just wanted to say, that to just put a high density neighborhood into such a small place just for the numbers, doesn't make sense to me. It feels like really poor planning if that's all you're doing is dumping it into a spot because we can. You're going to put all those units into a tiny spot, it doesn't make sense to us. I want to encourage you to use businesses and multi-use situations. I love the ideas of businesses and homes being on properties, I think that's incredible. And you know what? There's going to be an open space at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, so maybe that could be a good one. Let's just make good decisions that are appropriate for the space and the land and not just do it to fulfill the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Greg Jenkins, followed by Martha DeLeon.
By the way, my wife and I are celebrating our 41st wedding, 41st wedding anniversary tonight. We're spending it with you guys. Good evening. Clearly, the negatives far outweigh any positives for the proposed rezone of Dara Road to RH. To be honest, it appears that the only positive from the housing element perspective is that the property owner has allegedly said he's in favor of the rezone. There is no other positive, especially when you compare this to other more appropriate sites. I'm also curious about the Fairview Gardens. I know that's a pocket ag, I don't know if that's in the same ballpark as Bishop Ranch, but there is no ag being grown on there right now, it's just weeds. As an architect, I can assure you that the Dara Road property will not physically accommodate 127 units and all its required parking. Two car garages do not work for high density of 30 units per acre, and that's what we're talking about here. This will force the project to go to, to go with unsightly carports or uncovered parking. And even then, there will not be enough spaces on site to meet demand. Cars will spill over into the surrounding neighborhood. In speaking with the developer of the nearby tree farm, we gleaned some interesting facts that you should know. The tree farm has a total of 134 units, just seven more than what is being proposed for Dara. Walking through the tree farm, it appears pretty dense. You might be shocked to find out that the tree farm is not on 4.2 acres like Dara. It's on a whopping 26 acres. Imagine what Dara Road will look like when you cram 127 units, like the tree farm, into 4.2 acres. On a knoll. By the way, the subterranean parking that was, was not an option for the tree farm due to underground water table, so probably won't work for Dara either. Thankfully, you appear to be listening to us. And that's reflected by the changes in your straw votes from the last meeting. So thank you guys for your hard work, for really listening to us. This is not easy, I'm glad I'm not sitting in your chair tonight. And I just ask that you would make the right decision for Dara Road. High density is not, not appropriate. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And my final speaker slip is for Martha DeLeon.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the comments presented at today's, at today's meeting and making space for today to allow us to speak again. I'm grateful that our city council members and planning commission are hard, are hard at work solving the problems of today. I had additional time to research and evaluate the proposed site of 625 Dara Road for rezoning from medium density to high density, and I would like to continue voicing my opposition to the rezoning effort. The original intent for this parcel was for single family housing because it aligns with the infrastructure and character of the area. Other properties such as 7190 Hollister Avenue, 469 Kellogg Way, Fairview Plaza, 5897 Cuyahoga and the area south of Highway 101 adjacent to South Lake Los Corderos Road are more suitable for higher density housing to meet the California state demands. Alternate prop, I would like to also speak on alternate properties. Development efforts and follow through have been historically unreliable at 625 Dara Road in comparison with efforts from owners of other properties that are candidates for high density housing to achieve state demands. I would like to emphasize that the owner of 625 Dara Road has had decades to, you know, he has had approvals to build housing and has yet to provide the results as we see now, the land is still vacant after I don't know how many decades. There is a risk that the state demands will not be met if the owner of 625 Dara Road fails to follow through on promises, as has been the case for the past several decades. It is more practical to pursue development with historically reliable owners, alternate properties as described previously that are close to business centers, marketplaces and open space. There is a mutual goal in the Galita community to provide housing, including affordable housing, to local residents, but this property is not the location for that housing. It is extremely important that a collaborative effort is taken to solve the housing crisis. Owners such as the 17190 Hollister Avenue are willing to help the community. And I'll keep my comments brief, since a lot of the points have been made in previous meetings and in this meetings. I just would like to close with that there must be a balanced approach to new housing. High density housing is not balanced. I hope my statements appeal to the reason and logic of the city council and planning commission. Thank you again for hearing us out.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker slips for 625 Dara Road, nor are there any members of the Zoom webinar with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kasdan?
So, so you didn't, weren't here last time, this is Katie's favorite proposal. But what I had suggested is essentially that we are, we can look at the, so again, to go to the same thing, that medium density is, if you look at 20 units an acre, you end up with about 84 or something like that. So in other words, if we have a smidgen more, if we have that same idea of a cap, so in other words, our goal is to get over 20 units an acre. 20 units an acre is where we hit the high density threshold and the state will count it as high density. We've been including 127 because there's a range that the developer is able to use, which is the, from 84 to 127, or 20 units an acre to 30 units an acre. So what I had suggested before is that we say, we're going to do it high density, but we're going to cap the amount at 22, 23, or whatever it is, an acre. And thereby, we get a certain amount that we can count towards for HCD and without having this dramatic impact on the neighborhood. As far as the neighborhood goes, I think you guys have to remember too, 12 units an acre, that's the approved thing that's available. But he did initiate a general plan amendment to pursue the medium density. It is already sort of, it's, the question is, as far as 84 units an acre, in a way, it's a question of whether we want to have something that we can count or the same volume of housing, but where we don't get to count it and where we have an impact on, you know, the remaining areas. So it's not that we really have a 12 unit an acre alternative that's there, as long as the developer is pursuing, as he was when he came forward with the general plan amendment. That 84 is essentially the baseline, and it's a question of whether we want to try and figure out a way where we can help our challenge with the state. And so, so anyway, so the cap idea is, that's why I was, that it's another opportunity for us to hopefully split the difference here, come up with something that isn't going to be as dramatically impactful for the area and gives us something for the state.
Commissioner Smith?
I appreciate the creativity and thought in trying to work through solutions. However, I do share Commissioner Maynard's, Vice Chair Maynard's concerns. It strikes me that our way to set parameters is through zoning. We've spent years and years on our new zoning code, and I don't, I don't think we have the time right now to relook at our zoning categories. So that would be my primary concern. We, so I think we need to use our, the zoning that we have to, to kind of, you know, cast our straw vote on this one. With the other, I will just say, I mean, right, generally, we don't have split, this isn't split zoning in this case. We don't have currently existing split zoning.
Any other questions for staff?
I mean, we are proposing to amend the general plan. That's what this whole process is going to do. It is, by changing our zoning, we are changing the general plan ultimately. And if staff says there's a way to do this as part of the process, and I'm not saying I'm not staff, I don't know, I just, you know, offer up this idea, but if they think it can work, who am I to say not?
Commissioner Maynard?
In the last, we didn't get clarity on the last site, which was why I ended up voting against the proposal. But it seemed like staff was leaning towards using some way of playing with the split zoning at that site. So that site had two different zones, and so coming up with some combination of assigning zones to one section or the other section of that project. In this case, we don't have any split zoning. So there's even less flexibility at this site than we did at the last site. So I'm even less clear about how that type of flexible process would work here, unless staff wants to weigh in on that. But I would be looking for clarity.
Thank you, I think I'll only add that this site's a lot smaller and it's, you know, surrounded on four sides by development as opposed to different sites that might not be surrounded on all sides by development. So it's really kind of a site by site issue, and so I would, I guess, just leave it at that.
Okay. Oh, sorry, go for it.
So I don't know that we have a perfect answer to this, but I appreciate the effort to work out a compromise. Certainly, working with our existing zoning tools is easier, and we could intentionally split zone this site analogous to what we've done on another site. This is a four acre square property. And, and there is existing parcelization there, we could essentially, I mean, we could, if you wish, rezone, for example, the eastern portion along Dara Road at RH and then leave the remaining portion at RS or some other combination or RM. That's, that is an option that is available theoretically. We'd have to look at the existing parcel boundaries.
Thank you.
So going to my two comments. So one, I think one of the things we're trying to work through this process is working on a lot of very difficult issues.
on a lot of very difficult issues and a lot of very difficult decisions. And so there's been a lot of conversation about collegiality and the words that we choose. And so in trying to communicate around the issue of creating housing in all of our different neighborhoods, I made a note last time about how we had given feedback to the county about leaving out Montecito and Hope Ranch. And that—I do know from some of the public comment letters and some of the things that were shared tonight, that that hurt folks in the way that I phrased that. And so I want to apologize for the way that I phrased that, and also to imply that—to say that I did not mean that as an insult or an analogy, that this neighborhood is entirely like those other neighborhoods. I really appreciated Councilmember Karayakos' follow-up. I think it was very politely stated, but also like helped to add some clarity to the conversation, and I had appreciated that evening. I still do think that there's some interesting—it's important for us to think about how we do develop different types of housing and a diversity of housing in the different neighborhoods that we have in town. And I do think it's important that we think about the relationship and how we're developing in different districts. But I think I chose my words not well, and I did not mean insult by that. So I did want to share that with the group that's here tonight. Given the feedback that we have received and where we are in looking at the whole picture, and given the split vote that we had last time, I would be open to considering this for residential medium-density versus the residential high-density that I supported on the last. One thing I will note about the site that does make it different from some of the other sites is that it is raised on a higher knoll, and that does make it more challenging. Though I will note, the height limits will still apply, no matter what level of density we choose. So if they choose to go high-density, they'll still have to stay within the height limits. They'll still have to meet Galita's parking requirements, and so they'd be going for smaller units in order to be able to accommodate that. But I do think the knoll will make it appear even taller than it may at some of the other sites that we're looking at. So for that reason, I do think that I could support residential medium-density.
And excuse me, before we go on to any more, I understand that we have a hand raised on Zoom that we didn't get before, so could we ask that person?
Yes, we have Evelyn Sen. If you would please accept the prompts that are on your screen. We can try reaching out to her.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Karayakos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just want to lift up what Commissioner Maynard said. I so appreciate your words. And, you know, in that same spirit, you know, I was trying to quote Mark Twain and be cute earlier, and I know I made one of my colleagues feel like I was calling him a liar, so I just want to apologize for that. And I came on a little stronger in that conversation. And I think one of the reasons why I did is, you know, there was some discussion about it being an anniversary tonight. There's a different anniversary tonight. It's my mother's 69th birthday, and she's not here with us because she's in Arizona. And she's in Arizona because she's the second generation of my family to move away because they can no longer afford to live here. My grandparents on my dad's side both relocated because they couldn't afford Meravia anymore. And so they moved to Spokane, and they both passed away, and I didn't get to have those final years with them. And I'm kind of feeling it a little bit because I don't want the same thing to happen with my mom, who is now getting up there in age two. So, you know, we're all kind of feeling things, and this is a very human process. And I very much appreciate the public comments, the tone and the tenor of what's been said here by folks. You know, I'll go back to what I said the other night, which is, you know, I've heard it described that the process of planning is about two things: putting the right things in the right places and not putting the wrong things in the wrong places. And finding that balance is hard. And I'm going to support Katie Maynard on the medium-density. To me, it's a compromise. I think it's a recognition that the party—the parcel is near a school, recognition that if the developer still chooses to go forward with his original project proposal of senior care, he would no longer need a general plan amendment. He could just propose his project, and we can vote it up or down. If he shifts gears, then it's not a high-density project, it's a medium-density project, and that has a different level of impact on the neighborhood, recognizing that it's—while it is a single-family neighborhood, it is also close to major arterials. And so I think it's—I think it's that—it's that right balance. And I don't know that we're hitting it perfectly on the mark. I really appreciate what Councilmember Kasdan's trying to do in terms of finding a cap. I wish that was a tool we had in our toolbox. I wish that we had an overlay tool that could create like a hard and fast requirement that the housing be senior housing. But I'm also heartened that if for some reason the property owner doesn't go forward with senior housing—it's been made very clear through this process that there are other properties where the owners are willing to consider senior housing, and that is an important need in this community. So I'll support medium, medium-density, and we'll see how this all shakes out. I know it's not what the neighborhood wants. I know it's going to be a change. I know you're going to feel negatively impacted by it. Controlling the planning process as a city rather than having it be mandated by the state will give us some tools that will hopefully allow us to design it in a way where it won't feel like the knoll project that is over by the tree farm but a little bit further down Patterson, where it really kind of just is kind of towering on the hill. When we voted on the general plan initiation, I specifically referenced that project as something I didn't want. And as long as I'm on this council, if I have an opportunity to shape a future project, I will do whatever I can to make sure it doesn't impact the neighborhood that way, where it's kind of like looking down on everyone. Thank you.
I just have—I'm going to make a quick comment, and then I'm going to ask a question. But the comment is—I hope you all know—I think you do—how much time and how much we all care so much about Galita. I mean, we have gone above and beyond, I think, I hope, I feel, that—to have multiple sessions and meetings and really make sure that we listened and we thought about this carefully, and it didn't—it doesn't come easy to us. And so I'm really proud of our planning commissioners. They all work so hard, and our council. I really think we work together well, and I think we say things because we're passionate sometimes. And sometimes, I think—I've said a few things in the past that, "Oh, God, I wish I didn't say it that way." And I'll go home, and my husband always watches the meetings, and he'll say, "Oh, you should have done this." And easy, easy to say when you're sitting on the couch, right? And not part of it. It's hard. So I just feel a need to say that, how much I appreciate each and every one of you and all the people that do come and speak. We have a very well sophisticated, educated community, so—and I really, really appreciate that. But I guess my question—I said that was going to be quick. It went a little longer. So if we were—I know the vote was split last time. It was two for RH, high-density, and then two for of the council, medium-density. But the commission, I believe, was 3-2, so they were leaning more towards high and set. So my question is, do—with—if we were to designate it RM, would we still need to look at another site? Would this give us the cushion we need, or are we going to have to look at something else as well?
We would not need to look at other sites.
Okay. Well, that helps me. Anybody else want to—Mayor Protem.
Thank you. This is a hard one, and I know, you know, anything that happens here is going to have an impact on the community and the neighborhood, and I understand that, and I understand why there's a lot of pushback from the neighbors in this area. I continue to support the medium designation on this because I do think that it's a compromise. I don't think it's ideal. I don't think it's—you know, it will stick out. You know, anything other than single-family homes in this area is going to be different from what's already there. I think it's a better option than looking at the high-density, even though that would get us more than numbers that we need from the state. But I think in terms of the planning in this area, it makes more sense to keep it at the medium. And—and again, you know, like I acknowledge that there will be an impact on the neighborhood, and I know it's less than ideal, but I think it's a good compromise.
Thank you. Any other—Commissioner Fullerton?
I agree with Mayor Protem Richards. I believe that the vote last time—I think that the commissioners voted RM last time, not RH.
It was the reverse of what I said.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and I had supported the RM last time as well.
Wasn't that about 11 o'clock at night?
It was super late, yes. But yeah, it hasn't changed. I do support the RM, and I think it is a compromise, and it's not ideal, but it would be better for the neighborhood than the alternative.
Okay. Anybody else want to go? Commissioner Chapman.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple things about the site. One of the things that's really been troubling me in seeing this happen, I think, in a lot of California, is almost all the high-density housing, which generally has a greater chance of being affordable than lower densities, being located along the highways. It's a trend you notice even in our city. You know, it's essentially the least desirable sites. That's why they're often undeveloped or underutilized. So in that regard, this is a prime site to do the opposite of that. I understand that there is a lot of—the other councilors and commissioners do have a lot of other concerns about that, but I wanted to point that out. And I wanted to also address the traffic impacts, whether it's RM, RH, and the car dependency of the neighborhood. And I hope that we can get creative, no matter what we do, about trying to give people other options, and I hope we can commit to that as much as we can. Even with the RM, there are opportunities to remove bus service closer. I spoke with someone at the MTD. There is precedent for adjusting lines with significant developments and getting concessions from developers. As some of the public speakers have said, the neighborhood streets are very winding and disconnected. I think it would be interesting for planning staff to look into a potential opportunity for a walking and biking path potentially on the north side of Fairview Gardens that would allow access to Fairview Avenue and the library, rather than having to go all the way around Cathedral Oaks or all the way down to Berkeley. And yeah, I just—I think that, you know, when it does come to the question of demographics and income, I too am aware that not everybody in the neighborhood is exactly the same. You know, I've been looking a lot at one of the figures in the housing element. It's 10A11, if anybody wants to look in the appendix. And the division is still clear within our city. It's not as stark as maybe it's been made to sound, but, you know, around the neighborhoods north of the 101, they have the percent of the population that is living with low or moderate income, and it is 25% to less than 25% on the north side, and it's 50% to 75% on the south side of the highway. And so I'm still interested in giving people opportunities. And I do—I also want to thank Ms. Reyes Martin, even though she's not here, about the comments about the schools and trying to make sure that the schools are diverse and that everybody has an opportunity, no matter which neighborhood they live in. And I think that's great. But I still do think that we have opportunities to help the neighborhoods and where people live also be more diverse. Thank you.
Well, I'll just jump in here. I know I was one of the councilmembers that wanted high-density, and—but now, I think—I don't want to complicate matters anymore by looking at some other alternative ideas. I think we can't hold this up. I think a good compromise for me is medium, RM. So I'm willing to change what I originally had suggested on this piece of property.
Let's vote.
Okay, straw vote. Okay, we ready for that? Okay, let's start with commissioners. Commissioner Fullerton.
Yes, the RM.
Okay. Commissioner Chapman.
RH.
Okay. Commissioner Smith.
Yes, RM.
Okay. Commissioner Maynard.
RM.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller.
Oh, Commissioner Miller, so sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I will keep my straw vote at RM.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Protem.
RM.
Okay, and I will be RM as well.
RM. RH.
So I think the three of us are RM, and there's—okay, I think you have direction. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I did get that there is a speaker slip for 469 South Kellogg.
And I believe I have a recusal for that. So that is an address that I live within 500 feet of, so I'll step out and come back for the closing discussion.
Okay, and we need to bring Councilmember Reyes Martin in, too. Okay, we have Councilmember Reyes Martin back, and if we can proceed with 469 South Kellogg.
Yes, we do have one speaker slip for the address at 469 South Kellogg. And if there are any members of the Zoom webinar who wish to speak on that property, please raise your hand. Our first public speaker is James Rolf.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm talking about 469 South Kellogg Way, which is designated as 73 low-income units. And I have a particular interest in seeing low-income units be developed here because I have an employee who was unable to find housing as a result of being—having to leave her double garage where she was living with her family of six in Old Town Galita. Even though I was paying her $35 an hour, she could not afford to rent a place that she could live in in Santa Barbara and was going to leave the area. Fortunately, she found another place to stay, which is another place that's being developed into low-income housing, and now she's going to have to leave again. So every day, thousands of people are commuting to— So every day, thousands of people are commuting to Santa Barbara from Lompoc, Buellton, San Andres, Oxnard. And these people spend three hours at least a day on the road in gridlock, trying to come to their job. They're sacrificing, living with their families. They're tired. They don't perform as well in their work. And yet, we rely on those people because we have to have those people in our businesses. These are people that are getting paid $20 or $25 an hour. They can't afford to live in Santa Barbara, but it makes our town not be a complete city. We need those people to be in this city because they deserve to be here. They're Santa Barbaraans, but they're having to commute because they can't afford to live here. So we need low-cost housing to house these people so that they can serve us well, and we can be a complete city. Now, as far as that property goes, the 73 units, that's not an underutilized property. That's completely filled with over 200 vehicles and storage units that people are using that don't have another resource in this area. What are those people going to do with all those vehicles and work trucks and trailers and everything that they have to relocate? There's no place to put those. So if you're going to consider that as a property to develop into low-income housing, you really need to mandate that there's some place to store those vehicles because there's no longer a place like that available. So I really appreciate the opportunity to speak, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, back to council. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Caston?
Yeah, just, what is our plan? If we're, well, I just want to know where we go from here, in a sense, because I would have an additional comment, depending on what we're doing.
I think we've completed our, what we were asked to do this evening.
Mayor, it's out the council's discretion. If there are other sites you wish to speak to, you may, but we have what we need.
What's our margin?
The margin is really tight. So just say that, and the math gets a little squishy when it's tight. Because like, there could be double counts, the discount factor, so we have to, we'll have to comb through everything and make sure it lines up. So without giving, I hesitate to give you an exact number because we really need to go back and crunch the math, but I'll say that it's pretty tight.
But we're at least at the minimum.
Yeah.
Let me just make a comment, then. It's regarding.
Sure. In fact, if anybody else wants to make any last closing remarks, or please feel free to.
Well, it's on the 7190. And since, or Weston has hung in so long.
Excuse me? Oh, oh, we need to bring back.
Oh, yes, of course.
Moving on, we need to bring Commissioner Maynard back.
Okay.
Have we?
Does anyone have a fluke on that?
No.
So just, you know, an additional observation, that the school that's currently most impacted as far as attendance is Isla Vista. The school that 7190 would be sending their kids to is Isla Vista. So if we were looking in terms of the schools, that would be a factor. We're talking about the most, the intersection with 101 adding all of that traffic. And when you add on top of that what the county is likely to do for that intersection, it's hard to conceive of. It's going to require an additional lane. The Public Works Director told us last time that there'll be an additional lane that is essentially mandated because the level of service is as it is. That's a lane, that's a project right now that is on our books. It is not, we didn't put it in our current inventory for this next year. But one of the CIP projects that we have available that has been already put, you know, created, is to add another lane for Hollister. So when we're talking about safety for the area, adding another lane just drives up the speeds. It makes the whole area more dangerous. It's not that they're going to be taking buses, as I said before, Hollister Village and other places, they're not taking buses around, putting in this extra area, they're not doing that. And the neighbors who live there, they're not single, they're not homeowners, they're renters. The people across the street, it's a big rental area. And so, I just don't think that's a good project. I think it's inappropriate to put that project there. The rezoning and so forth for 7190. And when you throw on top, it also has echo, you throw on top the fact that the view shed is there, it is the last single remaining view shed in the western area after all the development that's gone on. Anyway.
Any other comments?
Are these like concluding comments, just to clarify?
Well, actually, let's hold off because I realize that our speaker that tried to speak before, Ms. Shen, is able to get on again? Or is trying one more time?
Should I step out?
Oh, that's right.
I can just go into the hallway.
Okay.
Let's see if she gets. I'm sorry, it appears that she's now exited.
Okay, all right, so we're all, all right. Okay, so Commissioner Smith, did you want to make some remarks?
Yeah, just, in conclusion, I wanted to thank all of the members of the public for their participation in this process. The one thing I've seen in my years as a planning commissioner is that I think our outcomes are always improved when the public is involved in the process. And so I know these have been some late nights, some challenges with noticing, and so I wanted to thank everybody for the participation. Urge everybody to sign up, if you haven't done so already, to affirmatively sign up on the City of Galita's websites, to get emails and alerts, whether it's for Planning Commission meetings, City Council meetings. The City of Galita also has a presence on Nextdoor. I think you sort of have to, like, affirmatively look at it, but City of Galita is present on Nextdoor. So while there may be room for improvement, I just wanted to encourage everybody where notice options are available to use them. I just really appreciate everybody's, you know, commitment to housing opportunity. This is really about looking towards the future and, you know, the opportunity, whether it's, you know, young working people today, our children, our grandchildren, and the housing opportunities that are available to the future of Galita. I'm grateful that I've had the opportunity to be a resident here in Galita, and so I'm grateful to pass those past leaders for the planning that they've done in years past. And with this process, where we are truly looking to the future. I do think, as we all know, affordability remains a real challenge in this community. I urge the council to continue. We know that zoning alone is not enough to address housing affordability. So I urge the council, and I urge members of the public, to continue to stay involved and to come out and support when there's other policy issues that support housing stability and housing affordability. We need your voices. There can be a lot of stigma sometimes associated with those discussions. So I hope to see members of the public out and involved as we continue to grapple with those issues in the future. Water is going to remain an ongoing challenge. We need to continue to, you know, dialogue with the Galita Water District, our elected officials there. There's still, you know, their rules are still in place that we have to abide by. So, you know, those, and the parameters that have to be followed, those remain. So I do want to assure members of the public, it's not that, you know, water issues have just gone away. Maybe there'll be a temporary lifting of the moratorium, and then we have 10 more years of drought. It's just, it's hard to know what's going to happen. So it's going to remain an ongoing challenge. And then, you know, I think certainly we've just, we don't necessarily need a project to address some of the safety issues that have been addressed at multiple meetings. I understand there may be budget parameters for the council to consider, but maybe in, you know, small pieces or some creative ways, there might be some opportunity to, you know, look at some of these road safety issues, both within our community. And it is a challenge because it's multi-jurisdictional. It involves our state elected officials, you know, in terms of their role with our highways and the freeway, onramps and offramps, and so forth. So I just wanted to comment on those things. I wanted to thank everybody. These can be difficult discussions, but really what comes through, I think, are our values as a community, and I'm grateful for that.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Maynard?
I'll say ditto to that, so I don't have to say it again. That was all great. I think my only comment moving forward is that I will be surprised if we don't have to upzone again in the next eight years. We have a 20% inclusionary ordinance, only 10% of that is low income or very low income. And we are counting on 100% low income for these RH districts. So as these start to get built out and we come to terms with how much low income is actually built, I fully anticipate that we're going to have to upzone again. I think it's coming. And so one thing I would encourage City Council to encourage staff is continue to have these conversations with property developers, with property owners, continue to explore what the opportunities are, so that hopefully, if we do have to upzone again, we'll be able to upzone some of those properties that we really liked for residential high density, but that we weren't able to get owner, property owner buy-in for this round. But like, keep having those conversations, even if we don't need it for this particular round. So that would be my closing comment.
Thank you for that. I would agree, absolutely. Councilmember Carrillo?
I will ditto and ditto.
Ditto and ditto.
And then just add just a couple of things. One, I think overall, this is a very balanced plan. I think that when we wake up in the morning and stretch and go back and look and figure out what it is we did, we'll see that in terms of the total units that we need to get to the 1,837 or whatever the number is, are going to be relatively evenly distributed between east and west, in terms of just the total number of units. There's some variations in that. We don't know where the 152 ADUs are going to go exactly. There could be some variations there. But I think that in the final analysis, this is a balanced plan. It's going to help us to provide a diversity of housing units so that we can maintain a diverse community. I do think that having some of the properties zoned for residential medium will allow us to overperform on some of these sites and get some arena that we're not front-loading with the state. I think that one thing that we haven't talked a lot about tonight is state bonus density. And I do believe, especially just based on the current development history of the city, we have the Los Carneros Roundabout Project, which is going in at state bonus density, the Yardi Project at state bonus density. I think, I think that's going to be, become a trend. And so that will help us overperform because you can't count those on the front end. But then what ultimately happens down the road will make it easier for us. The fact that Yardi is coming, you know, saying they will come in at, you know, closer to 400, you know, closer to 400 units versus the 198 we're counting, and then all the other considerations. I do think that at the end of the day, there's going to be some sites where we underperform on for lower income, and I think there's going to be some sites that we overperform on. But I think if there's one thing we know about the history of Galita is if, if there are properties and there is water, there will be developers that will want to develop, and it'll become the job of this council to make the right choices and to find ways to balance competing interests and do what's best for our community. And I'm confident that we can all do that, and not just the council, but also the Planning
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Keep it brief. I think first, also, you know, just thank you to, to staff, to our planning staff and to our city clerk and everyone who's been with us these long nights. And to the public, I know that there have been concerns about, you know, learning about this meeting. I'm very glad that we had three meetings. I think, I think it was important to do that, and we saw the public participation increase with each meeting, which I think is good. And I would really, really urge, you know, all of the residents who have been with us or who will watch these meetings in the future to continue to stay involved. Please make sure that you are signed up for our emails. I'd really encourage our community relations staff, who does a great job, to think about, you know, what else could we do? I think, I don't think it's a bad thing to think about what, what else could we have done, to really get the word out even more, especially on things like this that have such a really big impact. And I think for, to the extent that we are recommending or urging our council to do things into the future, we talked a lot about infrastructure. And I know since I've been on this council, I've really urged us to do more when it comes to pavement rehabilitation, pavement maintenance, bike pedestrian access, really, I know others, and I think I'm thinking especially of Mayor Potem Richards, has been an incredible advocate for our BikePed Master Plan. I really, I really am committed to pushing that more. I think we really need to do as much as we can aggressively to get ahead of that. Vision zero, making, you know, making things better for pedestrian safety. And our roads are already so in dire need of help, and that is only going to increase with more development. So I think as a council, we also need to really look at how we make even more investments there in the years to come.
Well, it is 10:31. And I just want to, again, thank staff because you give us all the tools to be able to do our jobs. And thank you for all the hours that you've put into this and helping guide us and answer all our questions. And of course, thanks for everybody for being here and participating, and the council, and the Planning Commission. Thank you all. So that's all I'm going to say, and I'm going to say this meeting is adjourned.